Good evening. I want to welcome all of you to the March 23rd, 2022 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And this is our evening meeting with our workshop. And I know we have a number of folks that are here to participate, and some by phone as well. And we've gotten a good deal of correspondence. And so with that being noted, we're going to go ahead and get started. And I would ask our clerk to please call or roll to establish a quorum. We'll make some announcements, do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll be on our way.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, March 27th at 8:00 PM on Channel 14.
Okay, thank you Flo. Supervisor Frost, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Sue. Okay, then we'll have a few more announcements by our very able clerk and then we'll get started. Go ahead Flo.
Thank you. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first come, first served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for agenda, off-agenda matters. When the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net, and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please contact clerk staff for assistance at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. And thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you Flo. So with that, then we're going to move into our agenda. And we are now taking public comments on items that are not on the agenda as our first order of business. So I'll first see, I don't have anybody in chambers that have signed up for an off-agenda item. We have some for both items two and three. Is there any member of the public here on any item not on the agenda? I don't see none. Do we have any on the phone?
We do. We have at least one caller on the phone as of right now.
Okay, very good. Let's go to that and go to our caller and our callers and take our comments for items not on the agenda.
All right, please transfer the caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay.
And you can start with your comments now.
Okay, in consideration of the resolution setting compensation, will the rates be paid at full par value or face value? And will the participants be operating inside the district or in the foreign trade zone?
Are those your comments ma'am?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I would just say it's not clear. Your questions are clear, but I'm not sure to what the question was addressed to as it relates to compensation. And you asked about a free trade zone. Again, I'm not, was there some particular reference to some item that the county is considering?
Yes, your agenda item one, where approved resolution setting compensation and composition of the climate emergency mobilization task force and initiate the public application process.
Okay, yeah, that's our item number two. So we haven't called that item yet, but again, you're certainly appropriate to make the comments. We'll take those into account. And so ma'am clerk? Okay, so we're going to call you back. We're going to call that item in a moment. So we'll call you, we'll call you again, and we can take the question at that time. Okay?
All right, you leave me in the queue? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
That concludes your public comments for off-agenda matters.
Okay, all right, very good. Seeing no one else in chambers have signed up for any matter not on the agenda, then we'll go into our first of our two tied matters. And the first one being item two, if you want to go ahead and read the item, please, ma'am clerk.
Thank you. Approved resolution setting compensation and composition of the climate emergency mobilization task force and initiate the public application process.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Lundgren, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I see the presentation already. Good evening Supervisor Natoli and members of the Board. I'm John Lundgren, County Sustainability Manager. And I'm pleased to be here this evening to come back in the next step for forming our climate emergency mobilization task force. Last month, the Board conducted a workshop on formation of the task force and provided staff direction on the composition, operation, and compensation of the task force. And we were turned tonight to formalize the following details. The task force will be 13 members, composed of six environmental justice leaders, six topical experts, and one youth. Environmental justice leaders will be selected to represent the widest possible geographic representation of Sacramento County, with specific emphasis on our identified four environmental justice communities. We will expire the term, or we will stagger the terms of the membership, so they don't turn over all at once. Preparation of the draft bylaws is delegated to the county executive or designee. We are recommending that each member be compensated $70, seven zero dollars per meeting. And we commit to a minimum of a 30-day public application process for selecting members, and we will return to the Board with our recommended list for the Board to ratify and approve. So our recommendation tonight is that the Board approves the resolution that would authorize the compensation for the task force, and formalize the details I just discussed, as well as to direct staff to begin the public application process, and have us come back when we have that list of recommended members for your approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, John. Let me ask any questions of staff on this item? Okay, seeing none, then we do have a, do we have a speaker in chambers? And I know we had one on the phone, so if you'll stand by, John, we'll take our, so call the first speaker, Megan Chumway. Megan? And then we'll get to the one on the phone in just a moment. Good evening.
Good evening. I really support your decisions about the climate emergency task force. Because the cap, which is the upcoming item, is something that doesn't lend itself well for emergency action because of the length of time it takes to develop it and to execute it. I think that having a democratic method of having advice for climate emergency measures is essential. And that is why I support your decisions to set up the task force as you have. And I think that we'll have a lot of comments during the cap that may be dealt with during the climate emergency task force meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chumway. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on item number two? Most of the speakers have signed up for item number three. All right, I don't see anyone else in chambers. Then we did have a caller, call her back. Okay.
Excuse me, sorry. Yes, we have her phone number. We'll get her back on the line. And then we also have callers in queue, so I'll have her transfer the first caller and then we'll get her right back in.
Okay, thanks.
Please transfer the caller. She's probably trying to loop her in first.
Okay, all right.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes. Caller, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead and start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Oh, I see. So it's not during the actual hearing itself, it's prior?
They already opened item two, and staff has given their presentation, and so now it's public comment period?
But I'm speaking on number three. I entered number three.
Oh, it was number three.
Okay, well, if you could hang up and just dial that number again and get into that queue. There's only two people in there right now, so if you want to hang up and just call into that, thank you sir. Okay, bye. Okay, send the next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, go ahead and start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay, according to your agenda, item two, approved resolution setting compensation and composition of the climate emergency mobilization task force and initiate the public application process. First question is, in consideration of the resolution setting compensation, will the rates be paid at full par value or face value? And question number two, will the participants be operating inside the district or in the foreign trade zone? And that is under my comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you caller. Maybe John or counsel could help us with responding to those questions?
I can address that when I did my research, the way our boards and commissions are compensated is by payment as a special payroll through our special districts. So they would be compensated through payroll.
At $70 per meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And as to the question about operating in a foreign trade zone, I don't know that. They operate in Sacramento County, so I can tell you that.
I don't think, Mr. Chair, anyone understands the context of that part of the question.
Okay, so caller, if you wanted to, you know, either email or provide us maybe some context around the question, we can certainly try to get an answer. I think it's unknown, but we know that the task force will be made up of folks who will advise this board and staff on matters as outlined, and will operate certainly under the umbrella of the authority granted by this board in the county of Sacramento, so. And as to any pertaining to foreign trade zones, not familiar with that, but we certainly could try to research that for you, so. So thank you for your call. Okay.
Next caller, and that was the caller that called on the other line, by the way. Okay, next caller, please. Thank you Darrell. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Today, I'm calling on behalf of the League of American Atoktan Airs Tribal Nation. And our question is, in consideration of the compensation for the climate emergency mobilization task force, and the knowledge that the emergency evidences past performance and program failures and discrimination based on race and national origin, we would like to know what consideration was taken into account in the selection procedure for those who have been disproportionately subjected to unfair discriminatory biased and prejudicial public policies that have resulted in their poor life status, requiring a resolution declaring the climate emergency. And we would like to know whether or not the representation on that task force takes into account the public policies that misclassify people as persons and that deny indigenous ancestry when you classify them, and the need for increased representations for those groups that have been subjected to genocides and made endangered by gentrification and denied liberties by those misclassifications, for people that are indigenous being classified as black or African-American or people of color. What type of consideration have you taken to increase their participation since they've suffered for nearly half a millennium?
Okay, thank you caller for your questions.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good day. Happy Wednesday. In consideration of the resolution setting the compensation, the question is, will the rates be paid at full par value or face value? And will the participants be operating inside the district or in the foreign trade zone?
Okay, thank you caller.
Please send the next caller.
T-Mobile.
Hello caller here in the meeting. Please go ahead with your comment.
Good evening. I'm Steve Sander, resident of District Two, environmental justice practitioner and organizer, member of the city of Sacramento's Environmental Justice Collaborative Governance Committee, and also the Sacramento Climate Coalition. I support the approval of the climate emergency task force. However, as my written comments indicated, there still, there still seems to be four key unaddressed issues which I'll summarize for you briefly. One, I concur with the size and composition of the task force, but it needs to be clarified that a topic expert wouldn't be rejected and told to apply for the EJ position instead just because they do or have done EJ work. EJ leaders should reside or work in communities identified by Calenviron Screen 4.0 as being in the 70th percentile or higher for overall scoring. And the youth should come preferably from a disadvantaged community meeting that criterion as well. Two, equity must be at the forefront. It simply must. It was indicated that although John Lundgren, at the end of the day, will determine what does and does not go into the climate emergency response plan, that they would try their best to defer to the wishes of the task force. If there are points of contention between the Sustainability Manager and the task force, those need to be documented in the deliverable and flagged for the Board's attention. Three, the task force must be empowered to do its job properly. That requires technical assistance and allocating staff time to deal with questions that the task force members will inevitably have when it comes to weighing in and helping author the deliverable. Task force members should have assurances that they will be supported adequately by staff when it comes to technical questions, for instance, about emissions inventorying. And fourth, and finally, the task force must have ongoing legal support to establish what existing authority exists to take bold and decisive action under emergency and police powers. Furthermore, the task force must be supported to help establish what new authorities might need to be codified to ensure greater success and outcomes. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sander.
And I think we have one more caller. If you could transfer, please, possibly two. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Start?
Yes, please, thank you.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors and staff. My name is Dr. Gleyo Saba, and I have been a member, I've been a resident of Sacramento for 33 years. I would like to express my support for agenda item two and ask you to please approve the proposal for the task force and the composition, the terms, and the stipends for the climate emergency mobilization task force. I appreciate your efforts and those of John Lundgren in the formation of this task force, and for your willingness to work with and take input from the community so that we can quickly work on the climate crisis with which we are faced. Thank you.
Thank you caller.
And please transfer the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. Caller, do you mind muting the meeting in the background really quick? Okay, start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Susan Soelars, and I'm a resident of Rich Desmond's district. And I would like to speak in support of the composition of the climate emergency task force. In particular, I'm in support of the environmental justice representatives. And to date, the, there has not been sufficient engagement of environmental justice groups. And these are residents in disadvantaged areas, as you well know, are those who are most likely to be impacted. And just welcome this opportunity for further engagement. Thank you very much.
Thank you caller.
All right, and so that concludes your callers for item two. I'm just checking the queue one more time.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody's stuck in there, so.
Okay, all right, we have another in-chamber speaker on item two, Oscar Balager. Oscar? Did you just step out? There he comes. Wouldn't you know, we called you just when you stepped out, Oscar. I said, wouldn't you know, we just called on you just when you stepped out chambers, so.
I did.
Anyway, good, good to see you.
I think I'm a little out of the order that I expected. Well, good evening Supervisors. It's good to be with you again. My name is Oscar Balaguer. I'm with 350 Sacramento. And could I have the next, the first slide, please?
Oscar, you wanted to talk about the cap plan. This is on the committee, so you, I think you wanted item three?
Yes, the cap.
Okay, this is item two, so. It's all right, you're in the right place.
I'm happy, I'm happy to wait.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, good enough. We'll get you for item three. All right, any other speakers on item two? That's it. Okay, not, all right, then I have, bring it back to the Board, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thanks to all the speakers, both in chambers and those that called in to address the Board on this, this item. I am prepared to make a motion in support of staff's recommendation. I want to thank, before we do that, Mr. Lundgren for his help with the development of the details around the nature of the task force business, its composition, its compensation. The last time this Board had the opportunity to meet, I believe it was remotely at that time, to discuss, I think we had a really good and productive conversation, not just amongst Board members, but with members of the community and various advocates, to arrive at what I think we can be confident is an appropriate number of members, as well as the appropriate subject matter, including one youth member, which again, I think is a terrific augmentation to, to the task force. I just want to, before we ask for, before I ask for a second and we consider a vote, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just confirm with Mr. Lundgren and our CEO that when we go about making the selection or considering nominees for membership to this, this task force, this committee, the county's reaffirmed and very clearly stated position when it comes to racial equity and social justice, that that will be certainly a lens that we look through, as well as consideration for subject matter expertise, for instance, in different areas of environmental justice. So I'd like to hear from those two executive staff for the record, so that there's confidence in the process going forward.
Sure, excuse me, I'll be happy to start and maybe can emphasize and reiterate. As one of the managers that helped in the preparation of our environmental justice element, I had a tremendous amount of learning to do, and I learned about how important these issues are. And I certainly represent that sitting here tonight, my demographic is quite obvious, and that there's a real necessity to reach out to our communities. And the stakeholders in this room have already been helpful for me in doing that and for the rest of the team in doing that. And we intend both with the application process and the selection process to make sure that we're taking a very deep reach into our communities. And I'm pleased with the ability to offer the stipend, the compensation, because that was one of the limiting factors we heard about when we did the environmental justice element, that for our grassroots organizations and our community-based organizations, they have a full plate already. And when they're asked to come to the table on a volunteer basis, it just doesn't work for them. And so it's my intention, as I stated in the first hearing, to work with all those CBOs and have them help us distribute those applications to make sure that we get a very broad application pool. And then internally, before we come to the Board with a list of recommended members, we're going to make sure that we have a very diverse and inclusive group assist myself in providing the recommendations. It won't be a decision that I make unilaterally or by myself. And my vision would be to have people from both inside the county and representing the community as part of that, that review process. And I know that there's enough stakeholders in the room tonight and others that have contacted me that will have a good resource of people to rely on to provide that advice.
Great, thank you.
I could not have said it better. I agree.
Good. Well, good. I think those, you know, those are very important aspects to how we move forward, especially given my experience almost over the last 10 years serving on the California Resources Board, and which does have a dedicated environmental justice committee that we work closely with. And there have been some growing pains, quite frankly, with that over the years. And so I've come to realize that there are some particular sensitivities that can come to the surface if there's not consideration for who our community is broadly, whether it's LGBTQ, whether it's black, indigenous, people of color, whether it's the young or the old, whether it's male or female. And so those are all very important parts of our consideration, as I'm sure they are for my colleagues as well. But with that, I appreciate the response from our executive staff, and I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion second. We still have another, another member of the Board which wants to speak to us, Supervisor Frost.
Sorry. I'm going to bring this down, you guys, and I'll bring it back up. Thank you Supervisor, Chair Natoli. Well, I think it's appropriate for me to say a couple of words while I wholeheartedly support the efforts and respect the idea of respecting the earth and mitigating climate change. I was opposed to the declaration of climate emergency when we voted on it back in December. So I, I remain opposed to the declaration of emergency as well as the formation of a permanent climate emergency mobilization task force for the same reasons I opposed the original declaration of emergency. A declaration of emergency should be carefully reserved for those situations where there's catastrophic impacts that cause significant damage or loss of life, that we need higher resources to manage a 30 to 60-day period of an emergency. So climate, air quality, respecting- So climate, air quality, respecting, you know, the earth, all these things should be ongoing, these should be things that we're working on every day, not as a state of emergency or a declaration of emergency. I'm looking forward, I'm looking over the areas of expertise that we're looking at for this task force, and in my mind, I'm thinking, we have so many amazing people at the county who could, could more than qualify to manage the details of putting together a climate action plan, and with the help of those experts in the community, you know, we need those people too, but I'm just not sure we need a paid task force for that. I don't believe we need additional paid task force for this job to be done. So I, while I respect my colleagues, I'm not going to support.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Frost. Any other member of the board wish to address the motions on the floor? All right, seeing none then, we'll call for the vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Frost voting no.
Ma'am Chair, is there a reason why the vote is not shown on the screen?
Oh, because I didn't press the button.
There you go, there you go, confirms what you said, okay. Very good, all right, thank you for that item, thanks for all of the folks that called in and weighed in. Now we'll go to the main event for this evening, and I know we've got a series of presenters and a lot of folks that have prepared comments, along with, I'm sure, members of the public that want to weigh in as well, so with that, I'll have you call to item first, Madam.
Okay, Item 3 is the Workshop on the Community-Wide Climate Action Plan.
Before I go to Todd, Ann, did you want to, any introductory comments on this one?
No, I think this has been a long time coming, and I know that Todd and his team and the team of consultants have worked very hard to bring this forward to you today, so I look forward to it.
Great, and thank you for working with staff, though, that we can schedule this in the evening when it's more accessible to folks, and appreciate your leadership and work in that regard, so. Okay, Todd, turn to Mr. Smith.
Well, good evening, Chairperson Natoli, members of the board, I'm Todd Smith, Principal Planner for Planning and Environmental Review. Before I go through staff presentation, I do want to briefly go through the structure of tonight's workshop, and I provided in front of you, each one of you, a piece of paper that goes through the, what I'll call the sub-agenda, and then briefly is the staff presentation, obviously, I'm going to do that in just a minute, and then we have a number of key stakeholders who have been really collaboratively engaged over the last several years, and we've gone through the process. We're going to hear from them individually, and then we'll go into public comments through the routine public comment process, and then finally, staff will have a few concluding remarks and questions for the board, and then we can go into the board discussion. That's generally the structure of tonight's workshop.
Todd, if I, could I ask you, so we have presenters, will you introduce those folks, or are we going to ask them to, in the order you've got them called out here in the sub-agenda to come forward, they'll introduce their own team of folks, or how do you intend to do that?
Yes, I've given each one of those individuals a copy of the sub-agenda, so I believe they know the order, but I'd be happy to stand up and introduce them if needed.
Yeah, I was just saying, I know some folks signed up, you're already on the presentation list, because I have some speakers here that actually are folks that are part of the scheduled presentation, so we'll.
That's right.
Okay.
I asked that they also provide speaker slips, just in case.
Very good, okay, good, thanks, Todd.
Before I go further, I also want to acknowledge the volume of public input up to this point tonight. There are numerous public comments that have been coming in over the last couple days, and I want, do want to make a distinction between those public comments and those that are in one of the appendices of the CAP that, it's a big binder, right, a lot of information. So those comments that are in the CAP itself, we have been trying to address, excuse me, in the appendix to the CAP, we've been trying to address as we go through an iterative process, which results in the version of the CAP that we're presenting tonight. Those comments that have come in in the last, I'll call it, week, we're not intending to address those verbatim here tonight, but we do want to present the CAP in its current form while acknowledging the volume of input that's come to date. The county's consultant, Ascent Environmental, is also here tonight, and they may, they're available to answer any technical questions that the board may have.
Todd, if I could, just a minute, we have a question by Supervisor Kennedy, Pat.
Thank you, Chair, just Todd, to really make, be crystal clear on this, because you and I talked earlier, and, you know, it's sometimes confusing, because we're looking at correspondence that has already been addressed, but we can't tell that always, so just as an example, and the one I brought up with you, because I thought that the SMUD letter of April 9th, I believe it is, was very good and made some very good points, but in your opinion, you know, that letter, the concerns, have been addressed in the latest version already.
That's a good example, Supervisor Kennedy, yes, that is my opinion, and SMUD has, as late as yesterday, provided an additional comment letter that should be in your package separate from the CAP appendix that contains the prior comment letter.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Cerner?
Thank you. Before you continue, Todd, in the interest of making certain, especially speakers that are here tonight, who wish to address the board, understand this, this is a workshop, so the expectation is that this is not the finality of this activity, and, but it is, in fact, a milestone that marks the nearing of the conclusion of it, certainly, I would think, and I believe this would be one of, if not the, final times before a concluding board meeting, at which we would literally adopt the finalized climate action plan, correct?
That was going to be my next speaking point, so thank you.
You're reading the script.
This is indeed a workshop, staff is not asking the board to adopt this CAP tonight, we are strictly seeking to provide an additional opportunity for public input and to hear from the board directly in this public setting. As to the content, any missing information the board may need to make that ultimate decision, staff and the county's consultant can then go back and make any additional edits, revisions, what have you, provide any additional detailed information in order to enable the board to make that decision at a future date.
Great, thank you.
And just of note, that certainly would be a public hearing as well, because again, the, even if direction comes out this evening, that document would be circulated, that staff report, and so it would be an opportunity for the public to weigh in, obviously, before any action was considered and taken at a future date, so. Any idea, Todd, just as you're talking about that, is to, again, it may depend upon the volume, and certainly the volume, as you said, has been pretty heavy with people weighing in on different aspects of what you're going to present this evening, what people are going to present, any idea what sort of timeframe that would encompass, assuming we conclude at least this evening's workshop with some direction coming out of that, what do you think would be a reasonable amount of time?
I think that depends on the nature of the board's response tonight. Obviously, my goal is to get the CAP adopted in place, so we can fulfill the mitigation commitment we made via the General Plan Update, EIR, 10 years ago, 11 years ago, because it, from staff's perspective, that sets the regulatory framework for the county to begin getting on that downward trajectory towards 2030 carbon neutrality goal that was clearly laid out in the Climate Emergency Declaration. So depending on the nature of the board's request for information, any necessary revisions, staff believes that this is a really high priority for us to complete this task, and so I would like to be optimistic and say before the summer break, if not before budget, in June, again, depending on the nature of the board's comments and requests for information.
Okay, but sometime mid-year is at least the goal, if not sooner, so.
If not sooner, yes.
I'm the biggest optimist among us, but that seems pretty aggressive, and I'm looking at the body language of our CEO, and I think she might agree, but, so the intent then, Todd, again, through the chair.
Yes.
Is to collect comments and input, not just from the board, but also from the public, oral and written testimony, and let that stand as kind of the final effort to acquire last-minute changes, for lack of a better phrase, to complete the CAP.
That is my intent, and obviously, again, it depends on the board's direction here tonight. I believe it's important to set that goal, to drive to that priority. If it takes longer than that, then that's.
From, again, the regulatory context that you referenced earlier, is there anything magical about, you know, having it adopted before or after budget, or?
No, there isn't.
Beginning summer, after summer?
No, there's not.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just before 2030.
Yeah, right.
Just kidding, just kidding. Okay, all right, Todd, I set the stage for you, go.
Well, I'm already over time for staff presentation, so.
You're fine.
But I'll proceed, anyway. So by way of introduction, the Climate Action Plan was developed in response to a mitigation measure that was in the county's general plan, EIR, back in 2011. It was ultimately adopted as part of the general plan policy and implementation measures, and then more recently, in 2020, the board's Declaration of a Climate Emergency. And so this CAP is intended to integrate previously-prepared plans, which was the Phase 1 Climate Action Plan, which was adopted concurrently with the general plan update, and then the Phase 2A, or County Operations Climate Action Plan, in 2012, combining those and replacing those with a single comprehensive document. And public engagement and outreach for this effort began in 2016. The CAP details specific measures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from not just community-wide activities, but also government operations, county government operations, and also includes an adaptation strategy, and I'll get to that in more detail momentarily. By way of public engagement, there is a, an appendix D to the Climate Action Plan that goes in a lot more detail than this slide shows, but roughly 34 meetings, four workshops, over 6,700 subscribers to the county's Gov. Delivery topic for the Climate Action Plan. We had, let me go to the next slide, those public workshops and public engagement over the last six years have helped shape the strategies and measures in the CAP. Those public workshops were held in various locations, two of those occurred in what are now the county's environmental justice communities. We prepared flyers, informational flyers, both in English and Spanish, to try to engage a variety of stakeholders. And then more recently, in the last couple of years, we've been working directly with a focused group of stakeholders that, representing a wide variety of interests, from nonprofit groups, the building and development industry associations, community partners, government agencies, and utilities, as an example. And so briefly, I want to cover the components of the Climate Action Plan, and there are three or four main components. The first is the greenhouse gas reduction strategy, and that outlines specific reduction measures that would be implemented, and those are broken further into quantified and non-quantified measures. Quantified means we can relatively easy, and with all due respect to air quality and climate change modeling, I'm saying relatively easy, it's a lot of detail. Quantified measures have a certain numeric value associated with them, a certain metric tons of emissions reductions. Those non-quantified measures are those that are really good policy, but we may not have sufficient information to model at this time. Then we move to an adaptation strategy, and this is a framework and measures that address the county's, as a whole, the climate vulnerabilities and increased resiliency. So what that looks at is, with climate change occurring in the future, now and in the future, how do we adapt? How do we protect our communities against those changes? And then finally, implementation and monitoring, the CAP provides for continual assessment on an annual basis to monitor and successfully implement the CAP, and that includes a transparent and regular public reporting, not just to the board, but also to the general public. Finally, the appendices have a lot more additional detail, technical information that support these three strategies. So really quickly, I'm going to try to stay at a high level with this inventory slide, but I think it's an important slide to set the context of what we're trying to do. So we started with a greenhouse gas emissions inventory, that's the pie chart on the left, that was done in 2015 as we got going, and that showed all these different sectors of the inventory, so on-road vehicles, think about the transportation sector, that accounts for 34% of the inventory. Residential energy, commercial energy, combined, over 40% of the inventory. And then the smaller sectors are the darker blues and the smaller slices of the pie, so to speak. All of that results in 4.8 million metric tons of emissions per year. And then on the county operations side, a similar pie chart, the vehicle fleet is 24%, the employee commute 31%, buildings and facilities 23%, and then we called out airports, building and facilities separately, because they're somewhat unique, they're about 15%. And then the smaller sectors, and the smaller slices of the pie, combined, 123,000 metric tons per year. So that's the baseline. What are we measuring against? Then we move to a forecast, so by 2030, in order to achieve the statewide reduction target, we're looking at how each of those sectors, based on the modeling of population growth, how each of those sectors perform in 2030, both on the community-wide and the government operations, 2015 to 2030, and this slide just gives you a snapshot of what that looks like.
Can I ask you, in this chart, though, so if you're looking on the left-hand side there, the various community emissions, off-road vehicles shows an increase over the 15-year period, is that correct? And why is that?
I may have to defer to Ascent on that, they did a lot of the modeling detail. Would you like me to finish the presentation?
Yeah, I would, I just, as you had the chart up, because other ones either show reductions or a couple, a couple places static, but that one showed an increase, and I was, it just piqued my curiosity, so you can go through your presentation if somebody could answer that before the, this evening's over, it'd be helpful, thanks.
So based on that inventory and the forecast, we get to the reduction target, and I want to be clear here that the current target is based on the state's, the Air Resources Board's Climate Change Scoping Plan, which was last completed in 2017. We do expect an update to that plan this calendar year, but it's not yet publicly available. So the state target, based on that 2017 plan, is six metric tons by 2030, and then we further adjust that target to the local circumstances, and that's 4.8 metric tons by 2030. Excuse me, and these are per capita numbers, so we take the population into account when we're doing these calculations. And so the Climate Action Plan proposes measures that would achieve, and actually exceed the locally adjusted target, and put the county really on firm footing on that path toward the 2030 carbon neutrality goal that's specified in the Climate Emergency Declaration. And I think it's really important to make note of that, because some of these measures in the Climate Action Plan do go above and beyond what would actually get us to the target, and we can go into detail with that if need be, but that, this does put the county really on a course to achieve that 2030 carbon neutrality goal. And then finally, the Declaration of Climate Emergency, we've highlighted that in this version of the Climate Action Plan, and emphasize that the county is committed to further updates to the CAP, because it is an ongoing evaluation, monitoring, reporting requirement, and to the general plan, as we envision looking toward a general plan update, which I briefly alluded to yesterday in the annual report process. And we believe as staff, the CAP is the first step for the county to achieve that carbon neutrality goal by 2030.
Todd, before you leave this one, so your first sentence there, on the locally adjusted target of the 4.8 metric tons, I guess it's by, you said by per person, by 2030, that does take into account then projected population growth as well, so.
It does, yes.
Okay, so your overall emissions and/or emission reductions, compliance accounts for both growth, but also then reductions as applied in the strategies that are.
Correct, it takes into account, well, let me, let me back up, the target setting doesn't automatically take into account the measures in the plan itself at this point. On this slide, this 4.8 number, that just takes into account the 2017 Climate Change Scoping Plan, the statewide target, and then the locally adjusted takes into account various legislative requirements or other local, locally available information based on the data gathering that the consultant has done. From there. From there, we model, or our sent has modeled, all the different measures with a certain set of assumptions that actually achieve that target and actually go beyond that target.
And does it fall somewhere between the 4.8 and the 6.0?
It's below the 4.8.
Oh, it's below 4.8?
The cap gets us to a number below the 4.8 per capita.
Oh, it does, okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, before you continue, Todd, relative to our calendar to complete the cap, which was, we engaged on earlier, what, if anything, do you expect in terms of more activity on refining, revising the cap going forward, once we at CARB adopt the new updated scoping plan later this year?
So my understanding, and this is all secondhand, based on conversations with staff at CARB, is that the 2022 scoping plan update will provide some additional guidance to local jurisdictions on achieving carbon neutrality at the broad state level that we can then tailor to meet our local needs.
Fair to say that because, as you've mentioned, this cap, this adventure we've been going on together here, started with the county, quite frankly, being bolder than the state in terms of meeting, you know, a deeper mark in terms of carbon reduction. Do you think that, quite frankly, could insulate the county a bit, depending on what the scoping plan, the new scoping plan, the 22 scoping plan may say or direct?
I think it's fair to say that the county, in its climate emergency declaration and the 2030 carbon neutrality goals, is obviously 15 years in advance of where the state's goal is. So certainly, it's a leadership position that the board has set forth for staff to try to achieve. As to whether it insulates the county, I'm not sure.
Maybe that's the wrong word. Since we're kind of going over and above, we've got our sights set on a more aggressive target. Does that give us some breathing room? Does that give us some headroom, so to speak, based on the state's goals and the scoping plan as one tool in the state's toolbox to meet the state's goals?
Yes, it does. Staff believes that not just these measures in the cap, but those to come as part of the scoping plan update, and obviously tailoring those to meet the local kind of landscape, if you will. That would certainly put the county well on track, and frankly, well above and beyond a lot of other jurisdictions, not just in the Sacramento region, but elsewhere in the state.
I think that's important to point out because as perhaps as frustrating and exhausting as this exercise to date has been for so many, including those representing organizations in the audience, I think it's an important point to make because I look at it as a means of taking on more work earlier so that we don't run the chance of getting behind the eight ball later. And it's, you know, arguably an investment. It's an investment of time and energy over and above now compared to what we might be trying to do later if we weren't as, you know, weren't being as bold, weren't being as thoughtful now to play catch-up. And so I think that's something to make mention of.
I certainly appreciate those comments, and frankly, as staff, I'm reflecting on some of the language in that climate emergency declaration that calls for immediate mobilization of not just public, but also private resources to achieve that goal.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
I think, Todd, you said what I was going to try to clarify. We're basically 15 years ahead of what the state then is requiring. Our path is cutting 15 years off, so I'll wait, I'll wait, because I know you have a lot to go through. That is ambitious, very ambitious.
Okay, thank you. All right, no other questions? Is it junger?
All right. So the next slide here is getting a little bit into those three buckets that I talked about earlier. So the GHG Reduction Strategy, measures relating to clean energy, and that really is about providing clean and affordable sources of energy. I do want to acknowledge SMUD staff here is in attendance. They're a really great partner to work with on this Climate Action Plan, and it's really beneficial, not just for the county, but all of SMUD's service area. They've got a zero-carbon plan that's also ambitious. We have, well, I'll speak to this later, but we have modified some of the assumptions based on conversations with SMUD. The second component of the greenhouse gas reduction strategy is low and zero emission vehicles and equipment. And this is not just light-duty vehicles, but looking toward, excuse me, heavy equipment, the heavy-duty vehicles, not just for the county, but also the industry at large. And obviously, there are some technological advances that need to take place over the next several years to actually achieve some of these goals, but we think it's important to set that expectation here in this Climate Action Plan. Green buildings, looking at incorporating design features that reduce or eliminate the need for fossil fuels. And what we're talking about there is, on the electrification conversation, how can we reduce the usage of natural gas, which has a certain global warming potential in our buildings, not to mention the public health effects of it. Natural and working lands, what we're talking about there is the opportunity to sequester carbon, carbon dioxide by preservation, which is an important aspect of the South SAC HCP, but also increasing the urban forest. Primarily, we've identified a really critical need for increasing the urban forest in the county's disadvantaged communities. That hits on a lot of points, not just trees, but also potential for energy savings. Open space and carbon farming, measures that speak to not just the preservation, but changing or encouraging folks to change agricultural practices, which is a heavy lift, admittedly. We've had a lot of good conversations with ag community at large, trying to figure out how to actually achieve that. Finally, reducing driving and encouraging alternative transportation modes, and this is about promoting public transit through partnership with not just Sacramento Regional Transit, but also a number of other private transit providers and transportation management associations in the region. Alternative modes of transportation, thinking about increasing bicycling, pedestrian improvements, things like that. Carpooling, transit-oriented development, all good practices, particularly the transit-oriented development, which is in our general plan already.
Todd, can I just ask you on the carbon sequestration, because I know there's some fairly significant and of larger magnitude discussions that are going on as it relates to projects, particularly in the Delta. And they relate not just to certainly anything this county would do, but obviously have, you know, potentially a statewide and/or even international implications. With our general plan and with our Climate Action Plan, if someone, you know, comes to our county and has a project that obviously will undergo probably federal, state, and local scrutiny, I don't know if there are exemptions for local scrutiny, are we able to, as a part of our plan, again, if we're going to be the repository, at least the places that are underneath, lands that lie physically within the boundaries of this county for carbon sequestration projects of a large magnitude, do we get any credit for that? Or is that, and if so, I think it's important because, again, I know there are some, you know, large-scale projects that, you know, folks, I think, probably have talked with planning department representatives. I know that I've heard in different forums, you know, folks that come with international credentials that are looking at massive storage of carbon sequestration, you know, miles below the portions of the Delta in particular. And so I'm just, I'm curious about how that, or do they just get the credit and take it and then, you know, do the good work, I guess, and get the benefit of it, but we get no credit at all? So how does that work?
Well, that's a very detailed question.
Sorry.
Not a problem. So there's a couple of ways I'm going to answer that. One is through the lens of the general plan policy. Delta protection element is at the forefront of my mind, based on yesterday's conversation. I think through a variety of staff who are actively engaged in Delta activities, we can probably get a little more detail on an answer to you.
Sure.
But as it relates to this Climate Action Plan, there's a measure, GHG 31, that speaks to staff needing to explore a pathway for carbon capture and sequestration, just from a regulatory perspective. I'm sorry, it's on page 34 of the Climate Action Plan. We need to identify what the appropriate regulatory mechanism is through the zoning code. Obviously, there are no specific projects that are called out here in this Climate Action Plan. Those would go, if they're currently being envisioned by other parties, they would need to go through some sort of standalone project analysis. But we do need to figure out in the zoning code, how are we going to treat those from permission or entitlement process, if necessary? But there is potential for those conversations to figure out what county, what credit the county can get by way of GHG reductions.
I just would offer, maybe as a follow-on, talk with the staff at the Delta Conservancy. I know that the, Cam Wingram there has been talking with a number of other parties about, you know, certainly the benefits of carbon sequestration in the Delta and some of the positive impacts it could have landside. But I know there are some very large players that are, you know, beginning their due diligence and looking at, you know, storage of massive amounts of carbon dioxide in areas certainly that touch the boundaries of Sacramento County. So anyway, something to keep in mind, and again, nothing that's immediately pending, but I know that there are discussions along that line, so.
And those are certainly on staff's radar. They have been for several months.
Great, okay, thanks.
All right, so I just briefly have a couple of slides here, just to highlight some of the measures themselves. Obviously, not all of them, otherwise I would never be done with my presentation. But carbon farming is one of those measures, GHG 1, that speaks to promoting and increasing carbon sequestration on ag lands in the county through development of carbon farming plans. We heard a lot of feedback about this measure over the last year and a half or so, and we took, we asked our consultant to take a hard look at the assumptions here, and they have done that and reduced the reduction potential. So that number goes down from what it was previously by about 50%, but that number is based on some ground-truthing assumptions on projects that have actually implemented some of these practices in GHG 1. And so I think there's an opportunity, and I know John Lundgren has been actively engaged with not just folks in the Delta, but other key ag stakeholders on implementing some of these ideas. So I just want to acknowledge the change in this measure. GHG 7 is about eliminating fossil fuel consumption in new residential buildings. And so this is seeking to first require pre-wiring for all electric appliances and equipment in new, single-family residential and multifamily residential prior to 2023. And that is for low and mid-rise, single-family and multifamily. High-rise, which would be four stories and above, would be 2026. And this would be implemented via an energy reach code by 2023.
This, too, was a change from the previous draft, is that correct?
This one, we added some feasibility criteria to address some concerns about supply chain and financial feasibility. Obviously, through the development of a reach code, if this measure was adopted as it stood, we would further evaluate cost effectiveness and the feasibility criteria, which is required in any event to adopt a reach code.
Okay, thanks.
Infill development is something that we heard quite a bit about via this process. So Measure GHG 23, we have highlighted a number of activities that the county is already doing. And when I say we're already doing that, we have about 25% of the general plan's land use element policies, not to mention economic development and the housing element policies that speak to infill development and it being a priority for Sacramento County. So some of those, which I talked about yesterday, but I'll reiterate here. Green Means Go is a SECOG pilot program, $34 million available via competitive process. Sacramento County staff are actively engaged in identifying sites within the county's locally adopted green zones, where we can proactively get, apply for funding via Green Means Go, put it towards non-transportation infrastructure to help remove some of those barriers to infill development. The LEAP and REAP grants, local emergency action planning, regional early action planning, both of those funding sources go towards activities we're actively working on to reduce regulatory barriers to infill. The SB 2 PLHA grant, same sort of process, that'll be coming to the board in the next couple of months. The countywide rezone program, which seeks to increase the supply of, or on the inventory, of high-density zoned land available for multifamily housing, primarily, actually a substantial percentage of that in highest and moderate resource areas. And then perhaps the most difficult one in incentivizing infill development, the cap does include a measure requiring an infill fee on per dwelling unit equivalent on master plans or new developments that are not infill.
Todd, we've already implemented that, a couple of the master plans have come before the board, right? That's been a condition of approval.
We have, via two of those master plans approved in the last two, two and a half years, give or take, via their development agreements, have this same measure, $1,000 per dwelling unit equivalent, yes.
And is that included in the general plan? It doesn't have a dollar amount, isn't the general plan have some direction around that?
Not specifically an infill fee, per se. But certainly, the infill as a high priority of Sacramento County is in the general plan, Measure LU 3.
And just by way of reference, that's something that, even though we haven't collected a dollar against it yet, there've been, has been put in place in development agreements on approved development, that the board really hasn't had a workshop around how that might be best applied. Again, obviously, we haven't got any money in receipt of that particular condition, but that would be an opportunity certainly for this board going forward to then look at how that would be best applied for infill and/or reinvestment in neighborhoods, communities to encourage, you know, the infill. Some of that's infrastructure, you know, some of the undersized infrastructure in some of the areas where, you know, it's not seen to the naked eye, but sewer water, other capacity needs to be upgraded if you're going to actually be able to not just encourage, but to accept infill in some of the existing neighborhoods and areas and communities that are in the unincorporated area.
That is all accurate, and there's a few examples in that measure, GHG 23, a number of activities that are potentially opportunities to use that funding when it comes in, and it's listed as including but not limited to. So there is some discretion there in the use of those funds.
Okay, Supervisor Desert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Todd. And I appreciate you asking that question. I was going to ask that very question. Have we started utilizing that $1,000 fee to encourage more infill development? I guess my question is, Todd, is, I mean, we have a real challenge, it seems, attracting more infill development. And certainly in my district, I mean, we could drive around and look at empty lots, empty buildings all over the place in some of these unincorporated communities. Out of these, I mean, now we will have that $1,000 fee to help offset some costs, of course, but what other programs do you think that you list here, or other programs, that we could be maximizing or utilizing more efficiently to attract more infill development?
Well, that's a pretty broad question. However, I think the, those listed, plus, I know a couple of years ago, we worked on an incentive brochure. We, both in planning and environmental review and in economic development, put together a brochure that we marketed to certain commercial corridors to look at things like fee waivers, things like building permit expediting, things of that nature. Obviously, there's a conversation there to be had with special districts folks and figuring out what the revenue is to offset fee waivers. I think from a regulatory perspective, things like modifying zoning code standards, or in some cases, SPAs for corridor plans that were adopted, say, 15 years ago or more. those could be.
A conversation we've had.
Yeah.
Just off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, and I think we need to obviously be focusing on what works and what could work better in some of these communities, because if we're going to meet the objectives of this cap, then we are going to have to really get a lot more infill development in the unincorporated parts of Sacramento County. So, thank you, Todd.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to premise what I'm about to say with, it's not an, it's not an attempt to get ahead of myself or the presentation, but I suspect it's going to be somewhat thematic to some of the testimony we're going to hear on both sides of the cap from both development interests as well as from the environmental advocacy community. And it has to do with quantification, and we're going to see in the next slide that the reduction potential, again, is not quantified. And I have a, you know, it's one of those things where when you see something like that, when you're trying to establish policy that in large part depends on quantification, in large part because I think from industry's perspective, I think they rightfully want to understand the totality of the regulatory framework in which they're being asked to work in and understand kind of firm objectives. And then from the environmental community's perspective, I think it speaks to their desire to see specifics and not leave it to random chance that we hope that we meet our objectives. So I just say that because it's front and center here with these, this slide and the next. Any thoughts about the inability or the lack of quantification as it relates to some of the measures that are being asked of ourselves as a county government versus the inability or lack of quantification that we would expect from industry?
Yes, sorry, I'm looking for the page where we discuss that in the climate action plan. But for, I'll attempt to answer, and then I'll look at the actual page where it addresses that question. I think some of these obviously are set as policy goals that we may not have data available, we may not have information at the local level, at the micro detail, to be able to model effectively, to say with certainty. In particular, the incentivized infill development, to do a modeling exercise that depends on a certain amount of, or a certain number, let's say, of, say, residential, high-density residential in certain geographical areas of the county, that would depend on the county being able to prove, let's say, in five years' time or 10 years' time, that's actually occurring. SECOG does this every four years as part of their MTPSS update to demonstrate achievement of the state's carbon or climate change goals, at least specifically for light-duty vehicles. And that number is going to change over time depending on where that development occurs. So for example, if we did one scenario that had a certain development assumption, all on infill or a certain percentage of infill, it very likely would be wrong within a couple of years, just because development occurs where, from my perspective, speaking as staff, development occurs where it is most economically feasible and where the market will dictate. Broad statement, obviously not specific to any individual measure, but, and I can find that page where it describes the modeling constraints.
That's okay. I just, I would offer just a preview of coming attractions in terms of my disposition. For what it's worth is that, for those policy measures that either we can or we don't quantify, I think there is a, for me, a proportional discomfort with being very prescriptive about what we regulate or what we would direct of any entity that's, you know, got a part to play in reducing our carbon footprint, because it's, it's, we're admitting that it's not being particularly measured. It's, it's more a statement about goals than it is, you know, how do we actually measure our ability to achieve them? So I just put that out there because I suspect that that may be somewhat the spirit of what we hear after staff's concluded with its presentation. So, thank you.
Okay, next.
All right, so switching from the development side to government operations side, this is an example, Measure Government ECO 1, an employee transportation program. The goal here is to reduce those vehicle miles traveled from employees commuting. It's got a goal of, across the board, countywide, 30% of staff days to be remote. Obviously, we've learned a lot through the pandemic, staff, some staff, I should qualify this, not all staff have the ability to be remote. And so this is not intended to be a directive, for example, to county sheriff or those folks in other departments who interact with the public out in the field on daily basis, but for those departments that have the ability to have staff work remotely on some days, to try to encourage that. And things like alternative work schedules, 980s, for example, can reduce employee commute time and therefore VMT, or vehicle miles traveled. Energy efficiency and electrification, and this is switching to the existing.
Todd, let me pause for a second, Supervisor Kennedy.
Sir.
Yeah.
Sorry, Todd, I punched in late because your last bullet was the one that caught my eye. Promote alternative commuting options, including EV. The plan is a little weak, in my opinion, on electric vehicle charging requirements. And so when you say promote alternatives, commuting, active commuting options, including EVs, what do you mean?
Look, examples, yeah. So there's some examples in that measure about providing chargers, for example, if that's a constraint to an employee who is looking to buy an EV and they need to drive to work, how are they going to charge it? Obviously, a lot of folks charge at home overnight, but if they, you know, are running late, don't have the ability to do that at home for whatever reason, are there enough chargers at work to plug in? If that's a barrier to an employee who wants to buy an EV, let's try to solve that as one example. There's also a mention of a state program that has certain incentives for staff to buy EVs as another example. It's certainly not saying that the county should buy EVs for all staff.
Right, right, okay. Okay, I've got other questions related later, thank you.
Okay, all right.
All right, so existing residential buildings, GHG 6. This measure was previously, in the prior version of the cap, a point-of-sale requirement, meaning at the time, a residential building was sold, it would require at least one gas-fired appliance to be upgraded to or replaced with an electric equivalent. We heard a lot of concerns about that approach from a variety of folks and have modified it to reflect that electrification requirement or upgrade or replacement at the time of the appliance essentially dies, at the end of appliance life or when it's voluntarily replaced by the owner. And so by implementing this measure, this would be captured via building permits for additions or alterations of conditioned space through the normal building permit process. This would be a 2023 requirement for low-rise and mid-rise, and then 2026 for high-rise, just like the new building requirement. And then we've highlighted the need to continue partnering with SMUD on beefing up an incentive program if we can.
Todd, was there some discussion in, as it relates to how the county might provide further incentive? You talked about as related to infill, you know, fee deferrals or waivers and so forth, but we have intentionally over the years kept permits for replacement of water heaters in particular, I think roof replacements as well, to, you know, a minimum, some, and I think in a couple of cases, even less than $100 for the, for the permit, making them available online. Was there some discussion internally about that, in order to incentivize that, if you have programs on the end, on the one end, to help, you know, reduce the cost of that replacement, but also the county's contribution could be that the permit for that water heater changeout would be a no-fee permit?
We're certainly open to that feedback, yes. We can build that in if that's the worst desire.
Again, as a cost associate, we have to recover it, but I mean, again, you know, if someone gave us an estimate that that would be several hundred units a year, and that's a further incentive to a homeowner or to, you know, a property owner to do that at end of life, you know, a full package where SMUD may have, provide certain incentives, there may be manufacturer incentives, part of what the county does, and you want to have that regulatory oversight. I mean, that's why we kept the permits low, at least in part, is because we wanted people to get the permits so that you had the, you know, the safety inspections that go with water heater replacement and/or other appliance changeouts, some that may not require permits. I just think that's one of the ways we could think about contributing to this as a county. So I just, I note that as a comment, I know you're going to come back to us later on, but I, might be, and I have two supervisors, Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. And keep in mind that when you're having a project on like a water heater replacement or that type of thing, it's not just the permit cost that is involved, it's also the time that the contractor puts into it, which gets passed on to the consumer, so we sometimes forget about that. But I, I guess, you know, back in a previous life, I did a study in the city of Sacramento, and somewhere around 10% of the water heaters that are replaced actually get permitted. It's pretty abysmal. For, sometimes it's because consumers don't even know, they just go to Home Depot, buy it and put it in, or have their cousin put it in type of thing. And other times, it's just because they're trying to skirt the necessity and the cost and all that. So how do you intend to account for that if it's that small of a number that's actually getting permitted?
So there's a couple of ways in this, in the details of this measure that speak to, a lot of outreach is necessary, obviously. We need to provide a certain amount of education, whether it's, you know, downtown or out at GATI on the building permit counter, as an example, but also through partnerships with community-based organizations, folks like Rebuilding Together, Community Resource Project, who actively do this stuff on a regular basis, as well as even in conversations with the Sacramento Association of Realtors, providing information that instead of swapping out your appliance at the point-of-sale, provide some educational materials at the point-of-sale to help inform and educate the county's residents about the importance of these matters. And to the extent that we have, to Supervisor Nataulies' question or comment about permit fee reductions or even waivers, if that's an option that we can do, letting them know that, that's not a barrier.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Todd. On this one, just so I'm clear on the mechanics on this, so this would, this would trigger an upgrade to, of an electrical panel, even if the permit is for something that had nothing to do with an electrical component on the, on that residence?
So as written, yes, and I think we could stand to clarify some of that. I've heard some concerns about that being a potential disincentive. For example, somebody who wants to replace their windows as an energy efficiency upgrade shouldn't necessarily trigger electrical panel if the work they're doing is not necessarily related to electrical, right?
Right. And that's why it just kind of seemed not necessarily intuitive to me, that example that you're talking about, unless maybe there is an incentive available or something to the homeowner. Okay, thank you.
And I think you may hear from other key stakeholders on that point as well, but I'll leave that to them.
Todd, when you talk about partners, though, you know, there are different outlets where folks can purchase, obviously, the replacement, you know, appliances and units, but, you know, in this day and age, it would seem to me that if you made it so easy that at the time, a purchase, say a water heater, for example, that you could write their key in, get your permit, you know, have it online issued for that address, it's taken care of, if the costs were covered by the entity, in this case, the county or some other collaboration. And so they got a permit in hand, all they need to do is, once the, you know, the unit's installed, whether it's by themselves or by, you know, a certified, you know, craftsman, that, again, making it simple, easy, and certifiable, I think. And I think the question certainly that both Patrick and Rich ask about, though, is that if it drills deeper into the house where you have a panel or you've got to do other upgrades, you're getting to major expenses where, you know, again, and I'm certainly no expert, where older homes, you've got a 100-amp panel, and you've got to upgrade to a 200-amp panel, or you've got a 200-amp panel, and because of the nature of what you're going to add on there, you've got to modify that, you get into some, you know, costs associated certainly with doing that work and the parts, but then the permits as well, and you go to another, another division within the, you know, county household, you know, you may need a plumbing permit, you might need an electrical permit. It just seems to me that, you know, for all the things we have up for, have in place for health and safety and part of our regulatory and compliance, you know, duties as a county, and a lot of those are dictated by the state relative to building code and so forth, that there is a way that we could simplify that and make it easier and make it customer-friendly. And I guess the last thing I would say, too, I think part of the fear folks have is that I get a permit for this, but then you come up to my house and guess what? You know, well, you do, you replace the windows on your own and you need a permit for that, or it looks like a new roof there, Joe, and you're going to have to get a permit for that. And so it's not going in with blinders, but I think it's, you know, that skepticism that maybe just built in because of, you know, anecdotal experiences, that, you know, somehow if I get this permit, then the county or the government agency shows up and it is, then it's just, you know, you know, open range on whatever's out there. That's not how we operate, so I don't mean to put that forward, but I think that's a, you know, legitimate reason why folks don't, they don't, you know, they don't trust that, you know, it's going to be narrow. Although, and I would just say, as a part of this, I think with certainly what's gone on over the last couple of decades with HVAC replacements and installations, that folks have had an experience where that's been the installation, it may have required a panel upgrade, but it's been solely, and, you know, I think people have had experience with inspectors and certainly, you know, firms that perform those services on their property, and it hasn't blown up into something where that they've got, you know, now they're red-tagged on a whole, a whole bunch of items that, you know, may or may not require permits in the past. And so I think there's this general, you know, resistance, in a lot of cases, though, to, you know, engaging with the building department with any entity, but I, you know, I feel these questions frequently about, you get me into the mix and then, you know, guess what? Then you're, you know, and I gotta do this and that, and you gotta engineer for that. And so they just, you know, people run the risk, you know, I'll take my chances and beg forgiveness later. And so, both within the context of a cap, but also I think we want to, you know, accomplish generally with public health and safety, I think we've got, you know, we've got some work on our hands to do and, you know, it's, but one of the ways, obviously, is to make it easy and as low cost, if not no cost, and I think we have examples of those programs in this community that have worked pretty well.
I will say, by way of response, two, two things come to mind immediately. One, I want to acknowledge the work that John Lundgren is already doing through participating in the Rocky Mountain Institute cohort related to equitable electrification, which really digs into the weeds in a good way of, you know, what are the various building vintages in Sacramento County, thinking about your comments from a couple of weeks ago on the housing element, and really stratifying that information to help inform the prioritization towards implementation of this. There's a lot of good information that he's been able to achieve, obtain through that process, and it's by no means a done deal, but I want to acknowledge that work that's already ongoing. Second thing, what I'm hearing, what I think you're saying, and you can provide me this feedback, is, is it something that staff should explore potentially, my word, some sort of safe harbor structure where obviously we've got the building code, the statewide requirements, public health and safety, et cetera? Is there a way, if we're going to implement something like this, to reduce that apprehension from the consumer or citizen perspective, to provide them some level of comfort? If a building inspector is in their home, we're not going to, you know, red-tag their door, something like that?
Yeah, no, I think the safe harbor, not overlooking something that would be, you know, an imminent danger to, you know, an occupant or something like that, but I think that's a good example, and I think there are examples at federal and state level of that as it relates to some land uses and other types of approaches. level of that as it relates to some land uses and other types of approaches. So I think that would be a compliment to what you've added here, so.
Okay.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
Todd, I was going to ask, I just want to clarify, are we talking about one to five units? Or what if you're, we're not, this does not apply to commercial apartments or hotels. This is, are we talking about one to five units? And so if someone lives in a unit and they're remodeling their unit, but it's a five-unit or a fourplex, does that apply to the entire fourplex? If they have to upgrade the electric, it could be catastrophic, or it could impact people who don't really need the upgrade yet? Do you hear what I'm saying? So how does that work?
I understand what you're saying. So as written right now, it speaks to single-family residential and low-rise multifamily residential, which could be a duplex, a fourplex, what have you. And I believe the intent is to apply it only to an individual unit within a multi or duplex, triplex, fourplex, whatever it may be. But we could probably add some clarification around that if that's a concern.
It seems like if you had a 20-unit apartment complex and you, you would want to do everything all at once, but if one, you know, unit has something go out or one unit needs remodeling and that triggers, you'd have to bring electric in or change, change the whole building, that's, that's a lot of money for a small investor, private investor who just owns a little apartment complex. You know what I'm saying?
I do understand.
So how does that, how does that work?
I think that's why we've highlighted the need to partner, continue with SMUD on developing a robust incentive program to try to help offset some of those costs.
But this only, this only kicks in if, if they're remodeling or if there's an appliance that goes out.
Alterations of conditioned space, yes.
Not point of sale?
Not point of sale.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
I think it's, I think it's important to see if there's a way we can, because those, that's, one of the things we're trying to incentivize is market housing and affordable housing. And so while we're looking at ways to reduce parking spaces and reduce fees, and now we're adding a sort of a monumental, potential monumental burden on some, some investors. So I don't know if there's a way to accomplish, you know, what we're looking to do in other areas so that we can encourage housing and development. I don't, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out. Can we be easier on one side of it that we're trying to encourage and maybe try to find other ways to mitigate the greenhouse gas?
I think that's the nature of today's conversation, indeed. Some of these measures obviously achieve a certain reduction potential. This one in particular, 177,000 and change metric tons per year. It's ultimately the feedback we're seeking to get through this workshop from the board as a whole.
Thank you.
All right. Real, real, maybe not quickly. Sorry.
It's all relevant, Todd. 20 minutes turns into an hour and a half, not because you didn't try.
So in geologic time, briefly, so a couple of additional measures I want to highlight. GHG2, urban forestry, maintaining, enhancing the urban forest, that would provide shading to improve energy conservation in the adjacent dwellings and reducing the urban heat island effect. And this is an opportunity for the county to continue its partnership with Sacramento Tree Foundation. I know ever since I've started here and before that, we've been working with the Tree Foundation on their, their nature program and their neighborwoods programs, and this is an opportunity to continue that through priority plantings in the county's environmental justice communities. There's a co-benefit here with some of those adaptation measures, temp seven and temp eight, which also speak to reducing that heat island effect. GHG4, increasing energy efficiency and electrification of existing commercial and non-residential buildings. And this is the other side of GHG6, the previous slide. So how do we implement commercial energy efficiency electrification programs? That's a tougher nut to crack, depending on the use inside those buildings, and manufacturing, for example, is a bit of a challenge, but we're trying to increase those programs. And so we need to, again, do some outreach, a lot of outreach, provide some education strategies, and again, a co-benefit here with temp seven and eight. Measure GHG10, EV infrastructure program. This would implement the electric vehicle readiness and infrastructure plan, which was developed through the Sacramento Plugging Electric Vehicle Collaborative a couple of years back, and that would increase the EV network capacity. We've highlighted a number of chargers, 1,000 by 2025, 2,500 by 2030, through this measure. And now I'm going to shift gears into the other bucket, the adaptation strategy. So this is how we, the five overarching goals to deal with how we address the impact of climate change on the county and its identified vulnerabilities in a document called the Vulnerability Assessment. And we are looking at these kind of five topical areas. So increases in temperatures, extreme heat days, heat waves, increased risk of wildfire, smoke events, we all know what that's like over the last several years, increased drought, that's obviously a current topic of conversation. We see the potential for increased flooding, not necessarily everywhere in Sacramento County, but certainly more prominently down in the Delta, but in some cases in urban areas that are already subject to flooding and certain rainstorm events. And then sea level rise, this one for sure is further down in the Delta as opposed to some of the more higher elevations of the county. But those are the five topical areas for adaptation. Finally, implementation, this is something that is critical to achieve the success of the cap. We have full-time staff to implement the Climate Action Plan. Like I said earlier, John Lundgren's already doing some of the early work around not just the electrification, but the carbon farming and other things. Some of the tasks, and this is certainly not all of them, but we would add a minimum an annual report to the board and providing regular updates to the general public through a web portal that we would be developing, whether that looks like a dashboard with, you know, kind of an annual snapshot, similar to, but without, the negative kind of connotation of the COVID dashboard. That's a kind of a crude comparison, but we want to be able to demonstrate how we're achieving these things on a regular basis. Second, coordinating with other county departments. This is not just a planning and environmental review function. All, the majority of county departments have a role to play here, particularly in implementing the cap. Each county department that has a role is identified with each measure in the Climate Action Plan. And also there's a reporting mechanism internally and externally with the Climate Emergency Mobilization Task Force. Third, ongoing coordination with nonprofit organizations and community-based organizations. We see that as key to the success of the cap. Fourth, on implementation, is adjusting when necessary. So as part of the annual reporting, we're going to need to be identifying those measures that aren't working as envisioned originally and modifying them based on our experiences as we go through implementation, and we figure out what's working, what's not working. How do we adapt? It's an adaptive management exercise. We would also be updating the inventory, the community greenhouse gas emissions inventory on a regular basis, and then providing updates on implementation to regional planning agencies and organizations, and also learning from each other. We're already doing that in collaboration with a number of jurisdictions in the Sacramento region on best practices for cap implementation. I've talked about some of these key revisions already, but I do want to just highlight a few other things. The 2030 carbon neutrality goal is emphasized earlier in the Climate Action Plan itself. It clearly identifies the Climate Emergency Mobilization Task Force, as well as the Climate Emergency Response Plan, which was listed in the, in that declaration or that resolution. And I do want to clarify here, we as staff are not intending to put that, the development of that plan onto the task force by way of responsibility. The cap clearly says, in staff's opinion, the county will develop that Climate Emergency Response Plan. And that would be done within one year of cap adoption, and through that process, informed by the 2022 scoping plan update, as well as the natural and working land strategy that we are hoping to see from the state this year. Those two tools, as well as any additional ideas that come as a result of the public outreach that's going to be ongoing, identifying feasibility of all those measures and setting that carbon neutrality target for 2030 through that Climate Emergency Response Plan. Measure GHG30, this is a measure that was previously in Appendix F that had a list of strategy options. We brought that measure into the body of the general plan. It calls for carbon neutral new growth, which would be projects that are, the way it's written, future projects that would amend the urban policy area and/or urban services boundary would need to demonstrate carbon neutrality. And obviously, I'm simplifying that measure, but generally, that's what it calls for.
Todd, we need to pause for a second. We have Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Serna.
I wouldn't have gone as far as to be insulting to say you're simplifying it, but you did. It's a little more complicated than that, but the, I have a concern with this because of the unintended consequences, I can see. I just, I don't, I think this one needs some more study, I think this one needs some more fleshing out, similar to what you admirably did with GHG7, and put some more feasibility measures in there and that type of thing, because I just see this is going to severely impact our ability to get some of the housing, even some of the housing that, you know, will be complementary to the cap could be. I think that, you know, we have to remember we have a dual crisis here. I understand that this is an existential crisis with climate, but we also do have a housing crisis that is severely impacting. It's also going to affect the affordability of housing, quite frankly, it's going to drive up the costs of housing. And so I'm very sensitive to that. So I don't think that one's ready for prime time and probably should have spent some more time in Appendix F.
Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. I, too, have some, some concerns about GHG30, Todd. One of the things I don't want to see happen, to be very blunt, is that this becomes a plan that kind of begins to progress down a slippery slope of being used to oppose projects. And it basically sets up two different standards for new growth, if you think about it, with some of the master plans, for instance, that don't require USB and an EPA, what, how would you, how, how could you explain that there's equitable, an equitable playing field for projects that, let's say, have a merit because they're closer to, let's say, the, the central, central business district or for the county, for the city of Sacramento, compared to other more distant comprehensive growth areas that don't require those adjustments, but would have to go past this, this threshold that is articulated in GHG30? And again, it goes back, I hearken back to my earlier comments about quantification. How, how are new growth areas that need those adjustments going to know? There's no quantification, there's no measurement, there's no bar that is clearly explained for those projects to, you know, identify and then attempt to achieve. So I think there's a lot of problems with, with, with this particular aspect of what has been newly introduced into the draft plan and needs much more thought. And I would hope that we could continue to get input, not just from industry, but certainly others that have interest in this, this aspect of the plan. But as is, it doesn't seem very practical, it doesn't seem very fair, quite frankly. And I understand, we need to push the envelope as much as we can on new growth areas, but I think we need to do it with an eye towards what is fair and equitable and look to the merits of each of those plans and not just kind of randomly or arbitrarily saying there is a distinction inherent to new growth areas that need those adjustments versus those that do not. Yet we both would, you know, I think we'd both agree that we want those new growth areas to be as aggressive as possible in terms of reducing their carbon footprints. But I think this is rife with a lot of problems.
Supervisor Desmond.
Well, I'll just echo the comments of Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Serna. We certainly have two crises here. One is existential, climate change crisis, but our housing crisis is, is certainly a huge one. And I think this, unless we do some more work on this one, we risk sacrificing our ability to, to get more, more housing in Sacramento County. So, so I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
Echo number three.
Getting all the echoes even before you got your presentation done, so I know you're going to come back to that, so, okay.
Let's see, we stopped there. So GHG6, we've already talked about. GHG5 and 7, we've included, as I mentioned earlier, some example feasibility criteria. GHG11, we've added some examples of VMT reduction measures, or activities, excuse me. And then throughout the body of the cap, this last bullet, we've identified a few alternative pathways for developments to demonstrate cap consistency. And so that kind of speaks to that Appendix I, which is the consistency checklist, as well as a number of places in the, in the body of the Climate Action Plan itself. And then generally, I want to briefly talk about the SEQA approach here. Staff, with the help of Asset Environmental, our consultant, prepared an addendum to the General Plan, EIR, and this is consistent with the SEQA guidelines. We did not identify any new environmental impacts. I do want to emphasize that this addendum to the EIR was published twice, the first time with the, earlier this year or last year, 2021, for a 30-day public review period concurrent with one of the versions of the Climate Action Plan. And then again, in February, when we published the revised draft of the cap, we also published a revised addendum. So there have been two separate opportunities, each with a 30-day review period, that this document was published. And I want to speak to briefly some of the alternatives, quote unquote. And so typically, in evaluation through an addendum, alternatives are not required, but staff felt it was important to identify a number of strategy options that were developed, and I'll briefly go through that. We developed them through the public outreach process and in consultation with the stakeholder working group. And so strategy option one was focusing primarily on infill development. That option also included the thought of raising the infill fee to $2,500 instead of 1,000. Obviously, that has a ripple effect to the concerns about housing affordability. Staff ultimately, I want to go back to Appendix F, this is where these strategy options were laid out. In this revised cap, we did not integrate that infill fee increase, we left it at 1,000. Strategy option two, community-wide carbon neutrality, this would amend the cap to immediately transition the county to carbon neutrality by 2030. We have, in the revised version of the cap, taken a lot of the We have, in the revised version of the CAP, taken a lot of the language from this strategy option, put it into the body of the CAP itself. Strategy Option 3 was the carbon neutral new growth. This was what became GSG 30, which we've obviously heard feedback about. And then, Strategy Option 4, this was an option that was kind of on the other end of the spectrum. So, in our earlier modeling, there was evidence that the county would be able to achieve the statewide target based on the 2017 Scoping Plan without too many additional measures. And so, some feedback was, can we do an adaptation-focused CAP? So, we felt like it was worthy of including that for consideration, and that would not adopt any additional GSG reduction measures and would solely focus on adaptation. Staff did not bring that one any further than Appendix F, because we felt it would be inconsistent with the Climate Emergency Declaration, and not put the county on a trajectory toward meeting that carbon neutrality goal. But it is in Appendix F for consideration. Finally, almost, the CAP is consistent with the general plan. There are, I think it's Appendix C, we list a whole host of general plan policies that support climate action, and this CAP would complement the general plan with additional reduction measures and adaptation strategies, and upon adoption, would be incorporated into the general plan as a supporting policy plan. So, think of things like the American River Parkway Plan, the Bicycle Master Plan, things of that nature. All of those are policy documents supporting the general plan. And the CAP does also support the county's existing growth management strategy in the general plan and the existing Habitat Conservation Plan, harkening back to the conversation about preservation of open space and habitat preserves. Those are key strategies and policy goals of both of those documents. Like I said earlier, we have committed to an update of the CAP through the Climate Emergency Response Plan, and that information that we're going to get from the state. And then, we heard a lot about, through the last several years, what can we do via the general plan update process? And so, we've identified the need for a comprehensive general plan update, and we expect that opportunity as one venue to explore new policies aimed at addressing some of those concerns about sprawl, protecting farmland, open space, emphasizing even more infill development, and reducing vehicle miles traveled. And so, tonight, we're going to go into the second part of the sub-agenda here. We want to provide the opportunity to, for the board to hear and the public to hear from some of those key stakeholders. Staff would like to receive any additional public input, and then the board to provide any further direction to staff. And so, I am going to stop my presentation now. It's been a little more than 20 minutes, but...
No follow-through.
And I do want to introduce...
Todd, just before you do that...
Yes?
Supervisor Kennedy has a question.
I'm going to take just 20 minutes here. There's, I hit most of the things, but I wanted to do it in this timeframe, because it helps to inform me when the public's speaking. One of the outlying issues that you did not address in your presentation was GSG 8, which was the requirement for Tier 4 cleaner final construction equipment. You know, I've heard from a number of people in the construction industry that while they don't oppose the idea of this, it's just not feasible because of the lack of, I don't know for better phrase, supply chain issues, and that the equipment simply is not available, and that they could not meet it regardless of how worthy they see it is. So, that's something we might hear from tonight. And then, you know, I'd like to just hit a couple of things in, that are in Appendix F, not many. I do believe this is a living document. I do believe that we will continually revisit F, Appendix F, so I don't have quite the heartburn that some people who have reached out to my office have with some of these, because I know that we're going to get to them, and that doing something right now without the proper planning and putting the right amount of thought into it, and prematurely doing something would, could actually defeat the purpose of what we're trying to do here, and then nothing gets done. So, I do understand your strategy with Appendix F, but there's a couple that seem like they're pretty low-hanging fruit, because the county basically has all the control over them, like F.2.1.3, the streamlining permitting electrification of existing residential and commercial buildings. I see your justification, your reason for dismissal. My concern is that we're taking, first of all, this is something that's fully within our control, and we're also taking away an incentive for people to do the right thing. And so, that gives me pause. The other one, this is kind of inside baseball, but I am the Vice Chair of SAICOG, and F.2.2.3, the Civic Lab, and the reasons for not participating, putting that in there. I think that what you've doing, not you, Todd, but what we're doing here is presupposing what a Civic Lab project would look like, and Civic Lab is not prescriptive to that degree. And so, I think just dismissing it like this is probably not necessary, and something that, you know, we could get money out of it as a county for projects to accomplish the goals of the CAP. And then, finally, you know, I wouldn't be true to myself as somebody who marketed electric vehicle charging stations for 11 years, before there were electric vehicles. And that's the EV charging at the airport. Some of the things I find, the reasoning is, I don't completely agree with, like high numbers of Level 1 charging, or better suited for long dwell times, all that. How many people are at the airport less than 12, eight hours, you know? By nature of what it is, they're going to be there a while. And then, also, the type of charging is expensive to install and requires large quantities. You alluded to the fact that there are incentives out there, and those are going to just continue to grow, and that the quantities of power, which may conflict with existing energy reduction goals. I understand that argument, I've been hearing it for a long time, but it doesn't take into account the fact that electricity is much more efficiently generated and transmitted than gasoline or petroleum or fossil-based fuels. So, it's not an apples-to-apples thing, and I'm a believer that the outcomes of, you know, far outweigh the concerns of the greater energy production. So, those are my comments for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor Jesus, Supervisor Serna, so on the airport, you were suggesting that maybe the reasons why not weren't sufficient to negate actually going forward with a more aggressive plan out there?
I think that a more robust program out at the airport, first of all, it's a great use, because again, people are there for a long period of time. I think a more robust program far outweighs the concerns that are listed in the CAP.
Okay, good, thanks. Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, this is more of just a point-of-order question. I see one more slide in your presentation. Are you saving that for after testimony?
Yes, I am.
He was.
I can put it up there now, and we'll come back to it.
I just didn't know when and how you wanted us to respond to these questions, some of which we've already responded to.
Right. And so, this is the question, these are the questions that I'm going to come back to after you hear from the stakeholders and the public comment. These are the questions that we would like answers to from the board.
So, thank you. With that said, I, quite frankly, as it regards the first bullet, I'd say half the room thinks it doesn't go far enough, and the other half thinks it goes too far, right? Which is, in some instances, kind of indicative of the quality of the work, of being, I think, genuine. And for me, that's always an indication that I think we're on the right track. I would suggest that while there's a lot of even emotional investment in this plan by many, that for me, the term keeping your eye on the prize here really is steeped in making sure that whatever plan we finally adopt is practically implementable. I'm not interested in adopting a plan that is cosmetic, but at the same time, I'm not interested in a plan that is so aggressive that we can't implement much of what is specified. That, to me, is really kind of the definition of a useless plan, in my humble opinion. So, that's a balancing act, just like everything else we do. And I would hope that while some others perhaps don't share that particular perspective, that they could respect and understand, at least, it coming from this supervisor, that that is my desired personal goal, is to certainly use this plan to make it clear that we take climate change, carbon emissions very seriously. But at the same time, the approach needs to be measured and tempered, in some instances, with other equally, you know, valid considerations, some of which have already been mentioned in terms of housing affordability. But again, this all goes back to the fact that we are an emergency, you know? Some may disagree with that, but I would say we've been in an emergency for decades. And quite frankly, the human species is kind of finally coming around and understanding the, kind of the acute nature of that. And we all have a part to play at the local, state, national levels, global level, certainly. But at the same time, we need to be, I think, very true to ourselves in making sure that whatever climate action plan this county proudly puts forth for implementation, that it does so with, again, an eye towards affecting change. That's what this is about. And if it's not going to do that, I'm not sure why we're here. So, those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Okay, any other comments at this juncture? If not, Todd, all right, on to part two.
Part two. Before I actually go to part two, Supervisor Anatoli, you asked a question on one of the earlier slides about...
The graph.
The graph. Are you...
[inaudible]
Yes, please.
Yeah, the specific question was why the off-road vehicle emissions go up when...
Is this on?
Yes, it is.
All right. Good evening, everyone, Supervisors. My name is Sam Rutterman. I'm a climate change analyst at Ascent. So, in regards to, I believe it was, off-road vehicles and equipment emissions in 2015 and 2030, so we do see a slight increase, I believe. And so, the foundation of the emissions in this sector, the projections are related to anticipated growth in various demographics, so in employment and in population. And so, while the 2030 emissions do reflect the legislative adjusted forecast, historically, this has been a sector that has been difficult to achieve emission reductions in. So, there are limited reductions that are projected in 2030 at this point. However, while this does reflect the best data that was available during the time that the modeling was done, this is something that the state is working on, and it's expected that, you know, new methods and new data may change this in the future. But again, at the time that the modeling was done, it was showing a slight increase into the future.
So, yeah, go ahead, Phil.
No, thank you. I just want to be clear, this is off-road vehicles, not off-road engines?
This does include equipment as well.
That's an important distinction to make, and that's why you see the blip that you do. So, this is going to include farm equipment, it's going to include lawn care equipment, it's going to include generators, it's going, that's the vernacular that's used to carbon, that's what I suspected was behind some of this.
Yeah, that's, I was going to ask the same thing, but I know that, you know, certainly our air quality management district has been working diligently with farmers, and certainly those who have those types of pursuits. Obviously, we've had discussion about GH8 here this evening, and how that would be implemented or not, and realities of maybe some of that. But with conversion of even lawn equipment and so forth, a lot of being electrified, certainly not all by any means, you still show, and that's, you know, again, you look at the chart, that's the only one that goes up. And I guess maybe then for clarification, if it's going to be off-road engines, that's different than off-road vehicles. I mean, it's, you know, vehicles are included in off-road engines, but does it take into account that the work that's being done by local air districts, including ours, which members of this board sit on that body? And we've been working, you know, certainly with, you know, converting diesel engines, those are used for irrigation purposes, those that are used for, obviously, periodic activities on farms and so forth. And I think I've worked, you know, diligently to change out, to incentivize the use of cleaner fueled engines, may not be all electrification. So, what was the input, Sam, in that?
Yeah, so those things will be reflected in future updates to the greenhouse gas inventory, and when there are future updates to the forecasts, that will, you know, come from updates to the methodology and the data. Historically, this is a sector that's difficult to get data from. So, at the time the modeling this was done, this looked at off-road vehicle and equipment emissions in 2015. You know, the inventory and forecasts were first conducted in 2016, I believe, so that was using an older version of the carb off-road models. And so, we now have newer models, more methods and approaches to obtaining the data are being developed. And so, those improvements that you mentioned, that will be reflected in inventories for, you know, new baseline years in the future, but also, it will, the projections in future years will reflect the impacts of new state regulations and things that are being done at the local, regional level.
Okay, we have a car board member sitting with us here this evening, so he may know a little bit about this.
Yeah, in an effort to maybe flank Sam here a little bit, I think the other part, Mr. Chair, that needs mentioning here is that in many instances, the off-road equipment/vehicles, their emissions per piece of equipment, per vehicle are multiple times more than the vehicles you and I drive to and from work each day. And so, that goes into this, as well as the fact that the rate of change to cleaner engines, even zero emission in this sector, quite frankly, has been slower and more to follow what we're doing in the traditional standard vehicular section, whether it be light, medium, or heavy duty.
Okay, all right. Very good. Well, thank you, thank you, Sam, thank you, Phil, and answered a question for this evening's purposes, but obviously, be adjustments, as you've noted, as we go along, get better data, so. Okay, very good. With that then, now we're ready to go to our...
Part two. So, we've got a number of key stakeholders that are listed on the sub-agenda here, starting with, I believe, David Mogavero, or is Ralph coming? Ralph Propper.
Okay. And my understanding was that we were allowing five minutes for these presentations, is that correct? So, folks have, there are some PowerPoints, and so, we'll accommodate the PowerPoints and certainly presentations as well, so. Good evening, Ralph.
Hi, good to see you all. Yeah, well, after that, what, 90-minute, 20-minute presentation, I guess I'm going first, because the others, well, hopefully, they'll show up later. But I'm Ralph Propper, and I enjoyed walking over here in the 80s, temperature in March, very nice, but it just makes me wonder what summer will be like, smoke, whatever. I was a research specialist at the Climate Science Section of the Air Resources Board, and after that, taught chemistry at UC Davis. So, I'll just note that we're breaking record highs about 10 or 20 times more often than we break record lows these days. And being involved with climate science for many years, I guess the main thing we got wrong was how fast it's going to happen. I thought I was going to be active here for the sake of my kids, but it's affecting me also. So, yeah, we need to make big changes, so that's why I'm now chairing the Ecosystems Climate Committee rather than just doing research. We're very grateful for the county's efforts here in developing this CAP draft. Others might speak to some of the assumptions that were made in achieving those goals, but I think the main point I want to make is, well, the biggest change we need to make, we need to increase housing in ways that don't increase commute distances, and thereby making our air and climate less healthy. Just by way of background, last month, the UN's Panel on Climate Change, scientists all over the world gave its most dire report ever. The UN Secretary General said, damming and... General said, uh, a damning indictment of failed climate leadership. So with that as, uh, background, let's consider Sacramento County. We are the largest, uh, jurisdiction by population in the six-county SECOG region. So, uh, Sacramento County goes, well, that's how the region goes. Uh, so, uh, you probably, you probably know that, uh, almost 20 years ago, the, uh, the SECOG created the blueprint, Sacramento Blueprint, nationally acclaimed to integrate land use and transportation planning, to cut down on sprawl and reduce vehicle emissions and get more transit and walking. And then, uh, a few years after that, SB 375 was passed. Uh, Daryl Stenberg was behind that to get those blueprint principles statewide. And based on that law, uh, the ARB where I used to work is requiring our region to reduce 19% per capita GSG emissions from, uh, from cars by 2035. SECOG is now developing, uh, the next version of the blueprint about how to achieve those original blueprint plans over the next 30 years with three pathways considered, business as usual, all infill, and something in between. And it's clear that we can only make that 19% reduction if we really emphasize the infill approach as opposed to the, the way that we've been growing. So, uh, I would say that, uh, we need to make major changes. Uh, we barely made the GSG target a couple of years ago. Now we have a climate emergency. We heard how the state is now giving us money for Green Means Go to incentivize the green zones of the county as identified for infill in the inner suburbs. That's where we need to focus our attention. There's lots of capacity there. We can revitalize these areas with, uh, being served by transit. People don't have to have cars. And, uh, if we do miss that 19% target, we will, we will lose out on federal and state funds that depend upon us achieving that. And, uh, if we revitalize the inner suburbs, we'll see the tax revenues go up for the county. And if we do have continued greenfield sprawl development, the vehicle miles traveled will increase and allow lower chances of achieving the 19% reduction that's, uh, that's required of us. So the, the county has a huge role in shaping the, the prospects for this region. So I'm, I'm asking you all, Patrick, Rich, Don, Phil, Sue, uh, we, we need to change what we're doing. We need to stop approving greenfield sprawl projects and commit to infill development and revise the climate action plan to reflect those, uh, major changes that we, that we need for our survival. So, uh, that's all I have to say. Uh, thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Ralph, and thank you for your work over the years and certainly your contributions in many different ways. We would appreciate that. So.
Thank you.
You bet.
So, uh, yeah. Uh, so our other speakers will, can come up later. So I think Barbara Leary would be next with the Sierra Club Sacramento chapter.
Okay. All right. Very good. Did, did you have a PowerPoint? Was supposed to accompany that, um, Ralph? Or Barbara, are you doing a PowerPoint?
Not, not for me, thank you.
Oh, not for you? Okay, good. Okay, good. Hi, Barbara.
Oh, I just had one slide that just kind of denotes the sections I was going to address.
All right. Very good.
Uh, anyway, good evening, Chair Anatoly and supervisors. On behalf of the Sierra Club, I'd like to thank staff and you all for your time spent in meeting with us and other members of the environmental community throughout this process. The club was pleased to find the inclusion of some of our requests, such as mandating carbon neutral new development, albeit in limited areas, and we think this is actually doable with more work. Uh, and we do understand your concerns about what a difficult process that might be. Uh, we also appreciate, uh, appreciate the focus on improved urban forestry. However, the club has ongoing concerns regarding land use and conservation and the importance of addressing the negative climate change effects that will result if stronger measures are not taken. We are concerned about the board's commitment to make very tough decisions about how our region will meet housing demands without exacerbating an increase in greenhouse gas production and the loss of lands that help to reduce carbon from our atmosphere. Section two of the CAP emphasizes conservation of open space with its statement about greenhouse gas reduction strategies. It states natural and working land sequester carbon dioxide from the atmosphere by focusing on habitat preservation, increasing urban forests and connected open space, and carbon farming. We support aggressive actions to preserve the forested lands in our region. Though they only account for 2% of the land area in our county, they represent 8% of the carbon stored here. We support the idea of carbon farming, however, a more aggressive plan for farmers to engage in. This on their lands must be created, and the land must be maintained as farmland to do this. It is disappointing to find that Appendix F finds actions such as supporting the American River Parkway and other sustainable land use strategies infeasible. Additionally, the county's decision not to participate in the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan has limited the chances of success for the plan to actually implement Section Two strategies. We encourage the county to become engaged with the statewide 30-by-30 plan, which identifies the Sacramento Valley region as having many important lands for conservation, including the oak woodland habitats and grasslands throughout the valley. Your participation in this effort can lead to implementation of the important conservation deemed infeasible in Appendix F. The CAP mentions limiting mitigation for carbon production, yet CAP Section 2.3 allows out-of-county offsets in areas outside of the county's control. All mitigation for loss of sequestration and increase in carbon must be done within the county. Urban forestry can be environmentally practical and economically efficient solution to increase carbon sequestration. However, newer, high-density, small-lot housing developments in the county preclude the planting of effective shade trees. Incorporating spaces for the planting of larger trees must become a greater part of housing and commercial development. The CAP acknowledges SECOG's 2020 Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy, which calls upon jurisdictions in our region to lower GHG emissions by accelerating infill development, reducing vehicle trips, and electrifying remaining trips. Yet many pending projects are far from existing or planned transit corridors. We must acknowledge the cost to the public that occurs with development into our greenfields. Although the initial outlay for infrastructure is arranged by the developers, the costs are ultimately shifted to homeowners via mellow roos assessments, school bonds, the increased cost of automobile ownership and operation, and ongoing tax measures to support maintenance and expansion of roadways. The more economically sound model is the infill transit-oriented model. We want to see imminent and long-term policy change. Discretionary projects outside of the UPA and USB have been allowed to move forward and therefore are depleting the county's capacity of existing and potential carbon sequestering lands. We ask that the board commit to reducing greenhouse gas emissions by establishing better development practices and improving carbon sequestration by protecting these lands. We ask that the board direct staff to begin implementing many of the CAP's measures now. Nothing prevents the county from beginning to reduce its emissions by calling for the completion of the Community Emissions Reduction Program as soon as possible, instituting changes in zoning codes and other legislative measures. We realize these are all big asks, but we're asking you to all step up to the plate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Barbara. Thanks for your contributions along the way as well. Okay. Next, we believe we have the Sacramento Climate Coalition. Chris Brown.
Good evening, supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Um, and thank you to the staff for offering this opportunity as well. Uh, we wanted to acknowledge that, uh, the plan has changed significantly since it was first put out on the street. We recognize that the staff has been listening to the public, but we still have recommendations. As you all have acknowledged tonight, we are suffering through a climate emergency that is moving faster than scientists predicted in terms of the swings in the climate. Uh, last year, we had heat extremes here and in the Pacific Northwest, in the same year that unexpected and unanticipated, completely unprecedented flooding happened in Europe. This year, we're going into a drought when we had record-setting rains in October, followed by record-setting periods with no rain at all. This is the second year of a drought, a long-term emergency impact. Some of the things that we think are addressed in the CAP are some of the elements of reducing VMTs, um, having more charging stations, although not enough, and promoting walking, biking, and rolling. What we don't see mentioned at all is the shift to non-fossil fuel, fuels for vehicles. That shift has to be made. And one suggestion is to have a transition where all gasoline stations are required to have EV charging stations located in the same location to increase the, uh, convenience for EV owners. In terms of EVs, there's, there are mentioned a bunch in the plan, but again, there are elements that are not covered. One that we think would be a great business opportunity is for the county to support the creation of a plant to convert existing, uh, internal combustion engine vehicles to EVs. Many people don't buy new vehicles, and that's why they're not in the market for an EV. But if we had a facility here to convert existing vehicles, there'd be a lot of people, I think, that would take advantage of that opportunity. In terms of decarbonization, we like the ideas that were raised tonight in terms of streamlining the permits. We also have suggested that in our comments. There is a National Renewable Energy Lab app that's available to help with solar energy. The county should consider sponsoring, uh, the use of that app. That's another thing that needs more mention in measures is the use of solar and solar on rooftop for existing dwellings. It reduces the, uh, impact on the environment as compared to putting solar out in greenfields developments. A number of ideas that we think need to be addressed in terms of adaptations, very specifically because of environmental justice, there's a lot of mention of it, but not very many specifics in this plan. Um, there's no mention of resilience hubs, which is an idea we have promoted. The idea of taking existing public buildings that are not being utilized now and putting in place, places where you can have food markets, um, tool, uh, share programs, uh, emergency response centers for during those climate catastrophe events where people could go for heating or cooling. Um, we also need to recognize that part of the problem in terms of environmental justice is people can't afford new equipment. So the county should support a higher minimum wage. We should also take programs like CalFresh, which you do support, and put it at a higher order going for 100% participation because it's not participated in very much. And that's a problem also in EJ communities is lack of food access. In terms of the unhoused, we need to create programs where the unhoused actually have a chance to come in and give their own feedback. They are living on the streets right now and directly impacted by these climate catastrophes and extremes. And the, the planning processes need to have a place for them to come in and give the input on the kinds of things that they need. We are also going to have to provide transportation to them from where they're at to these heating and cooling centers as the climate gets worse over the coming years. There's not enough mention of solar power in it. Um, again, we have a lot of emphasis in our comments about resilience hubs, the need to anticipate the impacts of the changing climate and the increasing extremes that we're going to see. And we end our comments with the cost of inaction. The costs are literally in the hundreds of billions of dollars. Uh, the one incident in Paradise cost over $16.6 billion to clean up. The Climate Center in Santa Rosa, a highly respected research and advocacy center around alternative energy, has estimated that if the state invested between $12 and $20 billion, we could achieve carbon neutrality, in fact, net carbon negative, more carbon sequestration than emissions by 2030. So we need to look at this problem a completely different way. We need to, uh, create or found a public bank here so that you can get your funding, and people in the community can fund the kinds of changes we need in the economy to move to a carbon-free economy. And there are many good funding mechanisms out there, not just grants, but, uh, utility, user taxes, uh, local bonds that have been used by communities across the country. We appreciate, uh, the opportunity to give this input.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for your presentation this evening, for the suggestions. Okay. Uh, next, we'll go to our 350 Sacramento, Oscar Bellager and/or Justin Tweet presenting, I guess. Oscar, this is your time. Let me lower that podium a little bit.
Um, thank you. Um, thanks. Good evening again. I'm still Oscar Bellager with 350. So 350 really applauds the board for adopting a climate emergency declaration back in 2020. Uh, but I have to tell you that this cap is not putting us on a path to achieve that goal. And we urge you to require a better cap. I wonder if I could have the first So this is our plea for a stronger cap. And I'll run through with you the cap requirements and promises, uh, provide a measure, uh, overview of the measures in the cap, talk a little bit about sprawl and about the fact that there's no environmental document, and ask you to do better. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you so much. You can see I'm new at this. So I'm talking about state requirements and county promises. SECO requires, uh, and the cap is a SECO-derived document. It's the long-delayed mitigation for the, uh, county's general plan update build-out. SECO requires that measures be feasible, substantiated, enforceable, and funded. The general plan, uh, EIR adopted by the cap, by the county back in 2011, promised a cap within one year, and that that cap would include economic analysis, timelines, detailed programs, and detailed performance measures. At that same time, in 2011, the, uh, county adopted a Phase One CAP Strategy and Framework document. And that document was, whoa, I'm taller. That document was, um, presented as, quote, "a roadmap for reducing," thank you very much, "for reducing the county's greenhouse gas emissions," a policy document which the present cap was meant to, uh, quote, "flesh out the strategies outlined in the Phase One plan." So I'm, I'm emphasizing here that a policy document was adopted by the, by the plan, by the county back in 2011. And that policy document, which is a beautifully published document, uh, included, among other things, that, the statement that reducing transportation-related greenhouse gas emissions is critical. That's VMT. And reducing VMT will require changes to land use and transportation policy, that is shifting development patterns to compact development. This statement is not taken out of context, and it's not, uh, cherry-picked. There are many statements like this in the 2011 Phase One CAP Strategy and Framework document. This is an overview of CAP measures. These are the 10, uh, most, I'll say, these are the 10 measures which contribute most to the county's greenhouse gas reductions, uh, the, the county's measures. They contribute 97% of the county's greenhouse gas reductions. I don't have time to go through all of them, but graphically, you can see that the, that across, the yellow columns, uh, ask the questions. Is this measure enforceable? Is it funded? Is it detailed? Are there timelines? Are there economic, is there an economic analysis? And are there land use-related VMT reductions? We consider that the, um, those, um, regulatory requirements and county commitments are binding, and that's the basis. And that's the basis of our expectations and the basis for our comments. So as you can see, the answer in most cases is no. The details of this analysis are included in our written documents, our written comments on this cap. This is a little bit about sprawl. So this is a map of current and pending projects. These are all greenfield projects. The green indicates approved projects. The red is the pending projects. The four very large projects outside of the, oh dear, I'm, I'm so sorry, I'm way behind.
Oscar, let me do this. I'm going to give you another minute or two. So if you do that, I won't have the red blinking going on here, so.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Appreciate that very much, Don. I don't have time to go through the, through the arithmetic, but I'll just say that the takeaways are that the, that the existing infill capacity could handle almost all the growth through 2040, CCOG's figures. The already entitled greenfields, already entitled greenfield developments provide over twice the projected need through 2040. And add in the four pending projects beyond the UPA, and that's 140 years' worth of growth according to county figures. Now, those excess entitlements do nothing to solve any housing crisis. They do nothing. That's the first reason we're interested in, in this situation. The second is that those, these projects will not build out in anybody's lifetime, but they will begin to build out immediately as the market develops. And the result will be a scattered pattern of partly built-out tracks around the county, impossible to serve with transit and, and generating high VMT into the future. Finally, and I'll try to wrap this up quickly, there's no EIR. This is analogous to San Diego's situation. Both counties adopted plans, updates in, general plan updates in 2011. Both promised caps. Both have lag and unfunded measures, and both said no EIR is necessary. The court found in the quote that I, on the slide, that this constitutes a failure to proceed in the manner required by law. The cap is not the same project as the general plan update and needs its own supplemental EIR. What we're asking, we want, we'd like the cap to be SEQA and EIR compliant. By EIR, I mean there are promises. Stop sprawl and invest in our existing neighborhoods. This is a quote from the strategy document. This is my last statement. Innovative planning strategies such as the county's Sustainable Infill Program will promote smart and pedestrian-friendly green communities, curbing VMT and revitalizing the local community. We'll do those things. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Oscar. Appreciate it. Okay, following Oscar then. Oh, I'm sorry, Patrick, you had a question. Go ahead.
Oscar?
Oscar.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your presentation. So I just have a question because this, this has come up, the, the EIR issue. As we know, and we all agree in this room, I believe, that timing is of the essence here. The EIR process is not a fast one. Don't you see that as a delay to implementing these measures?
Sir, because these measures are weak and because the cap will streamline sprawl, that is, the four, well, any, any projects, but particularly the four major, 55,000 dwelling units worth of extra UPA sprawl, we feel that that delay, and because that sprawl will kill us in terms of VMT and GHG, it's, it's the law, it's the elephant. For those reasons, we feel that the county is delaying things by not progressing in a way that's clearly called for by their promises and by SEQA requirements.
Thank you. Fair enough.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank Oscar. Okay, the next presenter on our list is the Citizen Climate Lobby, I believe, Jill Peterson in this.
Supervisor Natale.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to do this, but we kind of mumbled, jumbled up the order a little bit. If I may go next, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so, and you're coming under the...
I'm just going after Oscar. I'm not.
Okay, so, because we had him kind of grouped, David, so I had you with the Ecos group. So are you speaking on behalf of organization or just?
I'm speaking on behalf of Ecos as well.
Okay, all right. I'm trying to manage the time a little bit here, so I'm going to, how about if I give you three minutes? Is that okay? Can you do yours in three?
To be frank, I was told 10, and I was going to do my best to get it to five.
Okay, all right. Well, again, I just going off the sub-agenda here. I had five minutes per organization as presented, so. All right, David, I'll put five in a clock. Let's go.
Thank you for your indulgence. So I think Oscar laid the groundwork extremely well. And the bottom line is that without an aggressive sprawl control strategy, the VMT growth in this community is going to completely wipe out every game that you're going to accomplish with this plan. And so I want to share with you some of the other real reasons why a sprawl control strategy is really important. Todd, could you tee, where's Todd? Could you tee up my slideshow, please? Thank you. And the reason is, is that it's also an extremely powerful tool for accommodating an encantment of the countywide economy and also enhancing the solvency of the county government. So the question is, do we invest our precious real estate development resources to support greenhouse gas objectives and lower the cost for families and businesses in the county? Or do we work against those objectives by not having sprawl at the center of the, of the strategy? So I want to first of all, talk about overhead. Okay, now I need the slide and I'll try to.
Okay. Let me stop the clock for a second here because we got out of order.
Thank you.
Metro, it's the next slide presentations, please. That's correct. Thank you.
Very good. Okay.
All right, so very good. So do we invest those real estate resources out on open lands, beautiful farmland, et cetera, or in places where we need investment desperately in the community? Okay, here we go. So first of all, overhead costs for families. Okay, automobiles are extremely expensive. We talk about affordable housing, but we need to talk about affordable communities, not just the housing piece of it. The cost of owning an automobile is equal to the mortgage payment of 150, for $150,000 of additional house. When people invest in housing, they get a bump in their net worth, et cetera. When they own an automobile, it just goes, it just goes down the drain. Accidents are one of many health-related implications of sprawl. We spend half a billion dollars on accidents in the United States now, and that's actually an older figure. That comes to $1200, $1,200 per household, per year of overhead for every family in Sacramento County. And health and obesity. For every 12-minute increase in commute, there's a 6% increase in weight in the United States. Significant costs, costs go along with the health implications of that obesity. And then there's air quality. I don't have to go over that. Health implications of air quality have been talked about a lot. And, and very important to me is that kids get to walk or bike to school, and when they do, they have better school performance as well. So, okay, so then there's the public overhead. What does it cost to operate the county on the capital side? Density equals lower infrastructure costs for the development itself. I'm moving through these quickly. Infill can help, and infill is an asset to help transform those neighborhoods that have been poorly maintained and have these hostile arterials in, in many different places. And then there's the operating and maintenance cost. When you build at higher density, the cost to the county can be reduced by as much as $1,000 a dwelling unit for just the, just the maintenance of the infrastructure component. That doesn't count how much reduction in cost there is for police and fire, et cetera. And then favorite for me is that, is that higher density development really provides wonderful, wonderful neighborhoods, places where kids can walk to school and, and we move away from the auto-oriented neighborhoods is like, is like, as well. So this is supported by demand. NAHB has said that 45% of people want to live in higher-density communities. It's, it's not something that is just a pipe dream. Portland is a great example. From 1996 to 2014, after they implemented their sprawl control measures, VMT has been reduced in that period by 15% in that community. That 15% reduction is equal to all of the greenhouse gas reductions that are in this plan. Without VMT reduction, we don't get anywhere. Okay, so finally, this resource for development is a precious one. It has the ability to transform neighborhoods all over, all over Sacramento. It can mean a new town center for Citrus Heights. It can mean transformation of Fulton Avenue, Watt Avenue. I'm thinking about Country Club Plaza, for example, and the like. And there's opportunities for hundreds of thousands of residents in these infill areas, including Watt Avenue, El Camino, Franklin, Florin, Fulton Avenue. And supporting, is supporting infill, low-cost subsidized sprawl is the biggest barrier. That's the reason why we have trouble with infill. That's the bottom line, because that stuff out in the perimeter is subsidized, it's low cost, and the economics of infill, it's more expensive to build infill. But it is, it is impacted by the fact that there's this low cost, low cost, low-density sprawl at the perimeter of the community. So I sincerely ask that you send staff back to create a realistic cap with infill sprawl and sprawl control strategy. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Okay, I want to do just a little check here. So we had a certain order that I was attempting to follow per the sub-agenda. And, oh, Ralph?
Yeah, the, our last Ecos speaker is Barry Broom, who I hope can speak next.
Okay, so I'm fine with people speaking, but I had understood, I didn't know it was five minutes per person. If that's the case, then I need to do somebody. I thought it was five minutes per, again, you know, I want to make sure people get a chance to put the comments on the, on the counter. Todd, what was intended here?
So I had communicated to each of the stakeholder groups last week, five minutes per.
Per speaker? Or per group?
Per group.
Okay.
And provided this sub-agenda and worked closely with the clerk of the board staff to organize the PowerPoints in a way that they could be readily pulled up in this order.
Right. Okay, again, I don't want to cut people short, but I also want to be cognizant of time, and this is an important issue. And again, comments are all well-taken and certainly well-intentioned. So I'm going to, I'll let Barry come forward. I mean, he was in the, in the group here, but.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it was my understanding would be five minutes per speaker. Sorry.
Okay, no, no problem, Ralph. That's what I understood from what David said too. So, all right. Mr. Broom, good evening.
Mr. Chair, good news, I'm known for brevity. So, anyway, so when I was a kid growing up.
30 seconds?
First off, I want to applaud the county's work on climate change. And we, as you know, our organization, of which you're an investor in, really feels like our community has turned the corner where this work is actually advantageous to our economy and increasing our competitiveness. So, you know, we have 10 companies in this week, and most of the questions that we are able to solve now are, you know, how soon before your grid's fully clean, you know? So now the industries across the country are demanding these grids, you know, reach at 100% level renewable. And having smud is an incredible powerful asset now, and then being able to deliver that's really important. So, you know, our pipeline of companies are, are increasing dramatically, and we're getting more and more questions about diversity, equity, inclusion. What are you doing with climate change? How are we able to make sure we're getting reliable energy in a clean and safe way? And so I think, I think, you know, I wanted to make sure that I offered my comments that doing the right things to protect the environment is not by definition a damage to the economy. Of course, the devil's in the details, and we know there's a lot of elements to this, and I appreciate supervisors for asking questions. And then finally, the California Mobility Center, there's going to be 500,000 e-mobility jobs created in Northern California in the next 10 years. So it's really imperative that we get our fair share of those jobs, preferably 25,000 to 50,000 of those jobs. So we now have 44 companies investing in the California Mobility Center as a member, and we have 26 companies in a partnership. So it's still in its nascent stage, but one of the things that, that we're going to really put the push on is getting the California Mobility Center, which is really an engineering design center to help, you know, switch to, you know, from carbon to clean energy. And it's going to really be able to produce strong jobs, middle-class jobs for our community. But we're very excited about the county's work in this matter, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Great. Thank you, Barry. Okay, thanks to our speakers. So now, if I stay with the order here, I understood that next it was going to be on the phone, Citizen Climate Lobby, Jill Peterson, is that correct? Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Jill, you're on the line? Okay, very good.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jill Peterson, and I am with Sacramento Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby. I am the local issues lead for that organization. I want to thank the board for having this workshop and arranging it at night so more people can attend. And I also want to thank the staff for their hard work and making themselves available to talk with the stakeholders who have been speaking this evening. I want to go back to some things that were said a little bit earlier and just reiterate the fact that a local jurisdiction doesn't have to have a cap. Sacramento County wouldn't have to have one unless, and as they did in this case, they made a commitment to do so as part of a mitigation plan. Here, the county committed to do this cap in 2011 in order to mitigate the 20, the impacts of the general plan update in 2011. Also, if the cap is adopted, it will streamline the approval of development projects because it shields projects that comply with the cap from any GHG analysis or mitigation. This streamlining is of significant concern to my organization because if we have a weak cap, projects can rely on that and avoid GHG analysis or mitigation. So our concerns with this cap is that the largest source of GHG by far comes from cars on the road. These result from vehicle miles traveled. And in order to address that, we need to get cars off the road and prevent more cars from getting on the road and/or increasing the amount of driving. So reducing vehicle miles, vehicle miles traveled must be the focus of our county's cap. It is not. This cap focuses on reducing emissions in other areas, not vehicle miles traveled, which means it fails to address the biggest issue we face in addressing climate change. And the proposed, proposed reductions are far from certain. As many of the measures are vague, do not have clear implementation plans, timelines, and funding resources, as required by the county's own environmental impact report in 2011, the Climate Emergency Declaration, and state and regulatory case law. The measures in the cap that do mention vehicle miles traveled allow for offsets to a very vague program without the needed detail, and those offsets are reductions in other sources of emissions than VMT. Our region has allowed too much sprawl in development in greenfield areas outside of both the USB and UPA. As David so artfully stated, the quality of life, in addition to economics, compel us to move towards infill. The county must use its authority to determine land use and say no more development in greenfield areas. These developments need to be located near existing transit and commercial quarters while also bringing better transit to underserved communities so that they too can be candidates for infill. The one measure in the cap that indicates that will incentivize infill would charge a new development fee for developers in greenfields, a fee that would then be used for some incentives. new development fee for developers in greenfields, a fee that would then be used for some incentives. The irony of this is that, according to the plan, these incentives won't occur unless we engage in sprawl. That's counterproductive towards meeting our goal of reducing vehicle miles traveled. Can't we come up with other incentives, some of which were discussed here earlier? Streamlining of approval process, waiver of fees. Other cities are doing things to incentivize infill. We need to be doing more of that kind of thing. We should be setting a target for infill and outlining the means to achieve it. Some argue that in order to make changes in land use, we need to wait until a general plan update. However, that's not the case. The board has authority to act on land use policies and procedures at any point and can specifically determine any changes will go into effect immediately and become part of the update to the general plan anticipated in the future. As Oscar mentioned, the Strategy and Scoping Document prepared by the county as part of the cap specifically anticipates the board would use its authority over land use to address climate change, and repeatedly states that this authority over land use is the county's strongest tool to achieve target emission reductions. I know we have a concern about affordable housing, but these projects are not going to be affordable housing. As Oscar also mentioned, we have enough entitlements already, and as David mentioned, there are many economic reasons that make living in sprawl developments much more expensive. The cap also, I want to switch gears here, is disappointing with regards to its failure to establish the roadmap for reaching carbon neutrality. The climate emergency declaration, which is a legislative action of this board, expressly stated the cap would be the roadmap, and that staff would outline the strategy and evaluate the resources necessary to achieve carbon neutrality. It's now 15 months since that was adopted, and we do not have that work. Do not think that we have to adopt a cap to get going on these things. Any of the measures can be implemented now, and many of them should, particularly the electrification ordinance process needs to begin.
Jill, I need to ask you to, Jill, if you can wrap up, please, go ahead.
Okay, in order to meet the 2023 deadline. Thank you very much.
Okay, good. Thank you, Jill. Appreciate your comments. Okay. All right, our next speaker then is the Sacramento Electric Vehicle Association, and I believe Cynthia Shalit.
Hi, how are you?
Fine, Cynthia.
Good evening, Chairperson Natoli and board members. I'm Cynthia Shalit. I'm a member of the Sacramento Electric Vehicle Association, and I thought that all of you, after we met with you, would come back and say you got a new electric vehicle. So Sacramento EV is mainly making four recommendations. We wanted you to transition the entire county-owned fleet to electric as fast as possible, encourage all county employees to buy an electric vehicle, and encourage all county residents to replace their gas-powered cars and electric vehicles with electric vehicles, and finally, to install adequate charging infrastructure. This doesn't mean we don't support the other speaker's comments about having green development, reducing vehicle miles traveled, and having higher-density development. But when you look at the cause of greenhouse gases in the county, it's the transportation sector that is the largest source of greenhouse gases. That's why we think we should attack this most aggressively. Many people think we are just not ready to switch to electric vehicles, that there are just too many obstacles in the way, cost and difficulty in charging, to name a few. But we are lucky to be in a transportation revolution. One sign is that auto manufacturers have greatly increased their advertising of electric vehicles, even seen at the Super Bowl. So I push this little thing?
Yep, there you go.
Okay. And it's not just advertising. This slide shows a sample of the manufacturers making the transition. Okay, so this is a chart that was in the Climate Action Plan, and see the big blue line on the bottom there? That's greenhouse gas, carbon emissions from the transportation sector, on-road vehicles. And you can see that that line doesn't even get smaller as we go through the years to 2030. So we're really not paying enough attention to that sector and trying to reduce emissions from on-road vehicles. Okay, so if you could reduce half of the greenhouse gases by changing to, we could reduce half of the greenhouse gases by 2030 can be eliminated by just switching to all vehicles to electric. So we have 87 EV models on the market now, which have driving ranges of over 200 miles, and there are more choices, not just for light-duty vehicles, but also medium and heavy-duty vehicles, which will help transition the county-owned fleet. So EVs can help in a smart, cost-effective manner. First, owning an electric vehicle can be less expensive than owning a gas-powered car. The chart shows that the cost of a 2019 Nissan Leaf is $74 a month less than the comparable Nissan Rogue Scout, and that includes purchase, fuel, maintenance, and insurance. Even low-income and moderate-income households can have an EV. So if we want to have climate justice and economic justice, we want to make sure that they can have electric vehicles, and they know about them, and they have the infrastructure available to do the charging. Sacramento County has 1.6 million cars on the road, so that produces 6.4 million metric tons of carbon a year. There in one number, you can see why cars are the worst contributor to global warming. So how can we, what can we do about this? One way is to provide adequate infrastructure. Let's see. I'm going to skip that slide. So here we had a chart that the county had done, and they had projected that they would have 50,000 electric vehicles on the road by 2020. Well, we missed that target. We missed that target by a lot. So we have to do a lot more to try to get EVs on the road. I think I got lost here. Okay, so another thing is we need to provide adequate infrastructure, and we've talked about that a little bit. I think that we need to have 100% charging infrastructure in multifamily homes and require 55% Tier 2 charging infrastructure in new workplace and non-residential construction. So what can we do to encourage electric vehicle turnover? People normally buy a new car every seven years, or they change their cars. So if we can help them make the decision to buy one, we could have regular, ongoing marketing outreach and educational efforts to answer buyers' questions and get them to make the change. And SAC EV can help with that. The transportation to EVs needs to have leadership and dedicated staff. The cap now says that their goal is to have 10% of employees use green energy methods to get to work. We say that that should be increased to 100%, that 100% of county employees commute to work through green energy methods. And we think you can do this. And I didn't get to my last slide, which was about the county fleet conversions, but I think other people have covered that. And I think that, maybe I can just say that heavy-duty and medium trucks and heavy-duty vehicles, there are a lot more options available to us now, and so I think we can change the fleet faster. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cynthia. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Okay. Next, then, we have on our list, we have the North State BIA, Sacramento Region Builders, Exchange, and Associate Builders and Contractors.
This is Chris Norm. I'm actually just representing BIA, so I think Tim is going to go separately, under different.
Okay, so you're sharing in the five minutes, or you're asking for five minutes separately?
I'll share.
You'll share?
I'll go fast.
Okay, no, I want to be sure, because again, I think there was some, okay, got it.
So, thanks for accommodating us. Chris Norm, North State BIA, representing 500 member companies that are in the construction industry in the region, 50,000 workers in the region. And we're also a member of the Clean and Air Partnership, I'll note. So, good evening, supervisors, Chair Natoli. Throughout this process, it's been a long process. The BIA has tried to be very collaborative in meeting the greenhouse gas goals, and actually just wanted to stop here and say thanks to Todd for kind of hurting a tremendous number of cats this whole time. And if he is doing anything else other than this, it's a miracle, because there's just so much that he's been doing. So thank you to Todd, as well as to SMUD for all of their technical work and the county staff. I'm just going to note that, you know, given where the county is headed with this, it's going to make the county an international leader in this space. So the county has a lot to be proud of tonight. Our goal with the BIA and looking at the housing crisis, as well as the environmental crisis we're in, is to really make sure that the county strikes that right balance, so that we don't end up in a situation where the costs are so high that we end up, you know, driving up the price that moves people and home builders further away because of the cost. So I want to thank the board members tonight already for your comments, recognizing the balancing act that we're in. There's just a couple of quick items I want to mention. One is GHD number seven, which is the all-electric requirement. We want to move in this direction. We know that this is where the state is going to take us, that there is only 2% that are all-electric housing right now, and so we have a balancing act to get there. And I think that there's some good criteria that's in the cap right now. We just ask that you continue to urge the staff to work with us on the feasibility. I think that that's what their intention is. But that's something that's important to us. We've been working diligently with staff and feel like there's been a lot of good movement in that direction. This measure by itself is estimating to probably cost the new homeowner about $3,000 to $5,000, just so you know. But we're hoping that SMUD continues its offset program to make sure that the county's not in a competitive disadvantage with other surrounding jurisdictions, of which there are many who are not undertaking this particular measure at this time. I also want to just note that, you know, we want to urge the county to tell the staff to please look at flexible mitigation options. We've been in discussions with the Air Quality Management District about a carbon offset program that they're developing. I've not seen it yet, but we're hopeful that it's on track, and that might be something that could have some real teeth to really, from a technical and economic basis, move us forward. So please, you know, understand that we're trying to do things in the most economical way forward, and we think that we're on that right track. Again, I want to commend the staff and you guys for all the work tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. And Tim Murphy, representing the Sacramento Regional Builders Exchange. We have more than 900 members, representing 45,000 contractors, subcontractors, suppliers, architects, engineers, and industry support organizations. Also want to express our appreciation to Todd for the Herculean task that he's taken on. SRBX is proud to be a part of this process, and we want to be sure that Sacramento County can reach its climate goals, but we also want to be involved in helping the county reach its economic housing and infrastructure goals. We believe the achievement of all is not mutually exclusive, but it does require common sense, priority setting, and flexibility. Just want to say, pleased to hear the members of the board, it being in consensus, that GHD 30 is problematic and brought forward a little too soon. Similarly, Supervisor Kenny, thank you for calling out GHD 8. In speaking with our heavy equipment operators, they do say that Tier 4 engines are not available for large-scale dozers, loaders, or scrapers, and if that equipment was required, they would likely have that equipment go to other jurisdictions nearby where they don't have the cap in place, and they would use smaller equipment in place, which would create delays and drive up costs. So we just ask that GHD H specifies that it be reasonably available, and when electric-powered hybrid or alternative-fuel equipment isn't feasible or unavailable. That would be wonderful. We agree that, and appreciate the flexibility in GHD 5 and GHD 7, and thank you very much for the opportunity to participate in this process.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, one other party on the list on the sub-agenda then is the Sacramento Association of Realtors, Aaron Teague. Aaron?
And I am dramatically shorter than the two previous. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I feel the urgency to talk really fast, and I'm going to show the two guys ahead of me that I can talk even faster. But again, good evening, Aaron Teague, on behalf of the Sacramento Association of Realtors and our 8,000 members and their clients that purchase homes to live, work, and call Sacramento County home. We appreciate the opportunity to provide our comments as stakeholders throughout the past several years, as the Climate Action Plan has been crafted. Thank you especially to Todd Smith, who's always been there to make himself available to receive our comments, feedback, and even attend informational and educational events for our members. We look forward to participating, as this conversation will continue past this evening. At this point in the process, I just want to focus on GHD 6, which we realize is a challenging place to encourage change in behavior, because the cost of these retrofits come at big expenses to homeowners. The newest draft of this measure reflects the importance of flexibility and letting appliances run the course of the life cycle, therefore allowing homeowners to recoup the cost of the appliance, plan for the cost of replacement, and allowing the market space to catch up with that demand. But our association still thinks that in order to implement thoughtful change in this section, there is still room for improvement on how this measure is drafted, specifically as it relates to permits that do not include HVAC or water-heating appliances. Now, it would require an upgrade to an electrical panel or branch circuit to support appliances in the future. The major concern here is that the unnecessarily cost of burden it creates, and it creates waste on a home project if the electrical load in the home does not yet need it. The homeowner would be paying $2,000 to $4,000 on something that they would not see the benefit for until they upgraded the necessary electrical appliances. Instead, I hope that we can focus the panel upgrade that should happen when the electrical load needs to be actually increased. It's important, as we craft these policies, that we provide logical steps that make sense to homeowners as they work through the electrical retrofit process to create more efficient homes. So the window example already came up this evening, so I'm just going to run with it, because we want to encourage homeowners to make these window upgrades that are going to provide energy efficiencies to their home. But windows don't have anything to do with upgrading an electrical panel. And so now with this new language, we would require a homeowner to take on an additional cost of a new panel on top of replacing those windows. And honestly, homeowners aren't going to see the connection of how windows are related to an electrical panel, which I think, as we try to get homeowners to adopt these activities, it's going to make it more challenging. So the whole cost of a separate project could deter homeowners from making these important upgrades. We really want to create policies in the cap that are going to encourage incentivizing energy-saving changes to homes, and we need to help create pathways to do it incrementally with affordable options, instead attacking on extra costs that will disincentivize them to make these electrical upgrades periodically. It would be more effective to require the panel upgrade when there is a need to evaluate the electric load of the home holistically around the new appliances. We understand that there's an enormous amount of pressure for local jurisdictions to reduce GHD rates, but we should note that if Sacramento County is the only area in our region that implements these strict reach codes, you could be putting home values in the unincorporated county at an unfair market disadvantage than those in the outside area. My last point is, my membership understands that the implementation of the Climate Action Plan will not happen overnight, and there will be a massive need to educate all of our residents. We are ready to do our part to educate our membership that we can turn, educate our membership that can then, in turn, work with their clients that are buying, selling, and consulting on major home projects. Residents are going to need the tools and resources to understand and navigate these upgrades. Over the past several years, we've worked with SMUD, we've worked with Sacramento Tree Foundation, we understand the need for the urban forestry, we want to continue to work together to bring these thoughts and ideas into action, and we can definitely do that through our membership. So again, we appreciate the time doing this, and we appreciate the time to talk on this topic. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Well, you beat the clock, but I think the guys before you beat you, so. And time. All right. With that, then, that concludes the scheduled speakers, and I have eight or so, maybe nine, in chambers, and then I believe we have 20-plus on the phone. So I'm going to adjust the time to two and a half minutes, and I would ask folks if you concur with certain comments and/or other speakers, certainly reference that, just in light of the time here. But again, this is a serious matter, and we want to take into account any and all the comments we're receiving this evening. So first, I go to the folks that are in chamber, and so again, thanks for the patience that folks are on the phone. Reset the clock here. And I'm going to call three people in advance, so you can be prepared to come on down. So I have Mark Saban, followed by Megan Shumway, followed by Steve Words. So, and then, good evening. We can raise the podium for you, if you'd like.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi, Mark.
I'm Mark Saban, retired airports, operations, and fire department. Concerning GOV AR-01 Airport Fleet, this measure needs to be greatly Airport Fleet, this measure needs to be greatly expanded to include the transition to all-electric vehicles, including all ramp and ground support vehicles, such as passenger shuttles, aircraft refueling trucks, catering trucks, aircraft pushback tugs, belt loaders, baggage cart tugs, and even a fire truck or two. Also, the airports need to provide electric vehicle charging stations for all airport employees, county workers, airline employees, restaurant workers, TSA employees, sheriffs, et cetera. Many people work at the various airports. If there were charging stations powered by solar cells, that would be a work benefit, and it would help the environment. And those employees would not have to have a charging station at their home, their apartment, or their rental house, therefore speeding up the transition from gas to electric. All airports should be included in the CAP. Franklin Field, Executive Airport, Sacramento International, Mather, and even McCollin. If all airports had solar cells, EV charging, and electric vehicles, it would help the climate.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Okay, next, Megan Shumway, followed by Steve Wertz, followed by Kyle Crowe.
Hello again. I wanted to reiterate something. The Intergovernmental Panel of Climate Change says that key infrastructure systems, including sanitation, water, health, transportation, communications, and energy, will be increasingly vulnerable if design standards do not account for climate conditions. And I included this in my written comments, but I didn't include one thing that I wanted to tell you tonight. In my attempt to advise you to have an all-electric ordinance, I didn't tell you that Berkeley did an all-electric ordinance, and they had it upheld in court as part of their climate emergency plan. And this is something that you can do by using your powers under an emergency, and it is a climate emergency. And you may use your policing powers to forego the usual process and have an all-electric ordinance. And there isn't any reason not to do it, because it's one, a good third of our greenhouse gas emissions is from our built environment. And if you allow more gas infrastructure to be built, we will have a long time in trying to convert that to electric. You've heard people talk about all the problems about how you're going to convert that and make people change, and that's difficult. And it's not going to happen rapidly. But you can avoid building anymore. And that's the most important thing I'd like to point out. Thanks.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, next, Steve Wertz, followed by Kyle Crowe, followed by Megan Elsie. Elsie.
Thank you for having me tonight. Good evening, Chair Natoli, Supervisor Kennedy, my representative and board supervisors. Thank you for holding this public hearing on the, or public workshop on the climate plan. As I said, my name is Steve Wertz. I'm a long-term Californian and Sacramento resident, and I also work with 350 Sacramento and Climate Reality Project. I want to express my deep concern about the immediate, and I will say catastrophic, because that's been used as the counter to addressing this, impacts of global warming having in California and our community in particular. We know about droughts, fires, smoke, heat-related injuries, illnesses, air pollution, energy costs, et cetera. It's critical that every community act immediately and boldly. The message is clear: Think globally, but act locally now. The current revised plan is too little, and it's already too late. I'm wearing a Earth Day t-shirt from '95. I have them from before that, but that Earth Day started in 1970. We're already 50 years behind. So we have a series of general neglect and delay around this issue. My daughter shares her birthdate with the Earth Day April recognition, and I also work with First Five Commission, representing 100,000 youth in Sacramento County. So first, I'm going to skip most of my concerns about the limitations because others have spoke more eloquently and more knowledgeable than me. But certainly, I want to recognize that the current action plan is clearly an improved document, due in large part to listening to the community input and concrete suggestions provided. But it still falls short of meeting the massive challenges facing us today. And I guess I'm going to try to stress that. So just, we've talked about the reducing future auto traffic, the immediate use of county land management as a tool to stop developer land speculation, which leads to the sprawl and the jump leapfrog development that Oscar mentioned. And I would argue that the Environmental Impact Review is really still critical because of the streamlining that without it will occur. And I will skip most of the other things about that. But so I want to focus on solutions for a moment. And I want to indicate something that I think we've all come to recognize. Change is hard, but look at the massive changes that came about with COVID. We changed policies and procedures and behavior beyond the pale for anything we've ever done before. And that means that it's possible. Actually, COVID demonstrated how we could cut down climate, global warming, and greenhouse gases in particular. So I just want to indicate that when we choose to and when we feel compelled to, we can act at the level that's needed to meet this. I understand completely that the crisis is massive and can seem overwhelming and daunting to all of us. It will require very hard choices and potentially unpopular choices, which require strong leadership from you, our public elected officials. So I just, a couple--
Steve, I need you to wrap up, Steve.
All right. I just wanted to highlight that we could reframe the messaging here to help the public support these drastic changes that are going to be needed by sort of framing this in terms of growth possibility, opportunities to revitalize, renovate, and remake our existing communities, and finally, to redevelop our suburban hubs and urban cores of the city and by reframing this. So, and I have, you know, a couple other things, but--
Last comment, Steve. Go ahead, wrap up.
Yeah. So please take this opportunity to strengthen the cap and propose concrete ways to make it a truly transformational but practical roadmap for our green future. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks for your comments this evening and for writing to us frequently. So thank you. Okay, next, Kyle Crowe, Megan Elsie, and Chris Smith.
Thank you. My name's Kyle Crowe. I live in the county, and I'm also a Realtor and a colleague of Erin Teague's. I spent most of the afternoon composing my thoughts and writing them all out, and I brought the binder, but I left my notes on the printer. So I will make it as brief as I can and support everything that Erin Teague said. I, in addition to being a Realtor, I also flip houses. So I look, I take the ugliest, smelliest, horrible houses, and I make them beautiful. That's what I do. I flip houses. Don't judge me harshly. And when I think of the scope of a project and having to do it right and playing by the rules, taking something so ugly that, and making it a beautiful home for a family, it's expensive, and there's a lot of cost and risk associated with it. So you all mentioned the cost of electrification. You made my points that are on my printer. So just keep that in mind, and thanks for--
And you can send the notes to us still. I mean, you know, obviously, you've been here, and you were going to deliver them. So, and thank you for being so thoughtful. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks, Kyle. Okay. All right, next, Megan. And then Megan's followed by Chris Smith, followed by Kent Lason, and Nick Advis are the last speakers I have signed up here in the chambers. So go ahead.
Hi, I'm Megan Elsie. I happily live in downtown Sacramento. Thank you very much, supervisors, for your aspirational plan. Aspirations are good, but we need a plan that has more teeth in it. Enforcement measures and funding sources, we need those columns that Oscar had in the no's. We need those to be yeses. And I have a very low-tech graphic. It's probably just a bunch of colors to you. But this is a map of the smoke. In 2018, Sacramento had the dubious award of being the most polluted city on earth because of smoke. Another fact is that $50 million, that's the amount of money businesses lost in the Caldor Fire in El Dorado County in 2021. El Dorado County has less than half the population of Sacramento County. So although enforcement measures may be expensive, we have to look at the cost of not acting. Another example, $149 billion with a B, that's the amount of money that the 2018 California wildfires cost throughout the country. These are from a 2021 Cal Matters article. Another number, $45 million. That's the amount that flooding in Houston, Texas in 2015 cost. So when we think about the costs of acting on climate change, we have to think about the cost of not acting. And by having a cap with more concrete enforceable, concrete funding measures, we will make progress toward that goal. Eliminate sprawl, eliminate sprawl, eliminate sprawl. That's what we've heard tonight, and I am dittoing those assertions. We also need to follow the recommendations of the law firm Chatten, Brown, Carston, and Minter. And for, we need to have, get rid of the inaccurate forecast in the cap, have feasible alternatives and mitigation measures, and remove vague references. We can have housing, affordable housing that's in infill, and use public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you for your comments. Okay, next, Chris Smith, followed by Kent, followed by Nick.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board supervisors. Mr. Chair, I see you got my fax on matching suits tonight. So thank you so much for following through on that. My name is Chris Smith.
You look better on camera than I do, so.
My name is Chris Smith, and I'm here on behalf of the Associated General Contractors of California. We represent over 1,000 contractors across the state and many here in the Sacramento region. Our members are committed to helping projects in the Sacramento region be built on time and on budget and don't compromise designer safety. And we're here tonight to express some concerns over the provisions included in the Climate Action Plan, specifically around Measure GHD 08. We'd like to thank Supervisor Kennedy for bringing this up earlier, and we'd like to echo his concerns as well. While we should all be conscious of how we look to help the environment, we also have to be honest. And the honest truth is that this goal, GHD 08, is not feasible, and it's not attainable, or it's not affordable. On the feasibility side, right now, there are not enough new vehicles or engines available on the market, nor are there going to be in the foreseeable future so that our contractors can come into compliance with the rating requirement. It's not a simple supply and demand issue where if you have a buildup, more demand, the producers will supply more. Quite frankly, there aren't enough manufacturers or assembly lines cranking out this product to meet the 2026 goal, nor the 2030 goal. The current supply chain issue should provide enough of an example where it's hard enough for our contractors to get basic materials such as lumber and steel, let alone this type of equipment. And even if a contractor is able to find a vehicle or engine that meets this requirement, the price point is just not at an affordable level. What's important to understand is that no matter how big a contractor is, not all contractors self-perform the work. They often subcontract out the work or hire a specialty contractor, and those specialty contractors are usually disadvantaged business entities that are typically women, minority-owned, or veteran-owned businesses. And the amount of capital required on hand to purchase one of these vehicles or engines completely prices some of these entities out. And rebates are, you'll hear some things about rebates, and they're great except for the fact that the process of getting a rebate is written by folks who've never applied for those rebates in the first place. So they know that the rebate process is long, bureaucratic, ties up too much liquid capital, and that's if the rebate comes at all. So we like to thank the county for all its work on this, but we ask that this GHD 08 be amended in its final draft. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Nice tie. Okay, we have Kent Lason and Nick Advis.
Hi, good evening, supervisors. It's actually good to see you live in person instead of on Zoom. I mean, wow, it's like real faces, real time. It's great. And with the length of the meeting, I can sort of start to appreciate what Katanji went through this afternoon and yesterday. You know, I've been following the development of the county cap for over a year, and the document has great potential. It could be a real roadmap to get Sacramento to carbon zero over the next 10 years. But I do think that because of the soft kind of aspirational language, the questionable methodologies, and the disregard for sprawl development have rendered the cap much less than it could be. I appreciate the changes you've made over the various drafts, but I don't think they're enough to get us there. And it's clear why they're not good. Organizations like SMUD, which has much more, which is much more knowledgeable than I am, has listed multiple specific changes that need to be made to improve the cap. If you've read their letter, it's quite good, I think. I'm not an expert. I'm just a resident in the county who's very concerned about climate change. I ask you guys and ladies to demand a cap that will actually make a difference. The clock is ticking. If you don't do anything significant to address climate change, soon we won't have any choices left. And to Supervisor Desmond, you were talking earlier about the importance of infill. And just as a kind of curious personal project, as a retired photographer, I've been walking around the major arterials like Howe Avenue, Fulton, Arden Way, El Camino, all those areas. And it's amazing, the experience. You drive through those areas in your car, you're air-conditioned, you're looking, the landscaping's pretty good, and you're just trying to make the next light and get where you're going. If you stop your car and actually get out and walk around, you will see how devastated the areas really are. The buildings are very vacant. Some of them are kept up to look like they're, I have photographs of all this stuff, that look like they're operating. They're completely empty. There are a lot of unhoused people. There are a lot of mentally ill people, and it's very unlivable. When you walk on the street, you are about three or four feet away from cars that are roaring by you at 50 miles an hour, and frankly, it's not livable. You get scared. It's not a place for pedestrians. We need to make the infill work, make the area more livable. It's a wonderful opportunity. There's tons of it. So please focus not on the extremities, which just makes the crater larger, focus on the infill. There's a lot of opportunities. Start talking to developers about how they can win, how you can win, how the environmentalists can all win. We can all win by doing infill. Thank you.
Thanks, Kent. Thanks for sharing your observations as well. Okay, Nick Advis is the last one I have signed up in chambers. So, Nick?
All right. Thanks, Chair Natoli, members of the board. Nick Advis with Thomas Law Group on behalf of the Upper West Side Specific Plan Project this evening. I won't take up all your time. There are a lot of folks on the phone. So just voicing general support for the cap, certainly. As a project, we've taken the goals and objectives of our GHD future very seriously. This project represents a very unique opportunity about three and a half miles from the Central Business District, within five miles of 200,000 existing jobs, and whose boundary is surrounded two-thirds by existing development. And it's the densest master plan in the region, coming in at over 10 net dwelling units to the acre. We have committed to not just more of the same with this project, but something really transformative. We committed several years ago to go all-electric on all our residential units. And in addition, our recent traffic analysis showed that we-- And in addition, our recent traffic analysis showed that we came in at less than the significance threshold for regional VMT. No other master plan has achieved that or will achieve that threshold. So, you know, this project, in addition, is also subject to extremely robust GHG reduction criteria and will not benefit from any streamlining from the cap. So with that, I'll, I appreciate the comments made on GHG30. I think we need something a little bit more flexible than that measure and look forward to it being removed or revised. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Okay. That's all the speaker phones I have, so hopefully I didn't miss anybody that's still in chambers. And with that, we're going to go to the phones. Lady, we're going to have two and a half minutes. We modified the time, so I don't know. How many do we have on the phone? Okay, to any queue, okay, all right.
Please send the first caller. Please start with your comment. You'll have two and a half minutes.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Rosie Akub, and I live in District 2. I have sent in some written comments that I hope you'll take a look at. I'm going to try to address things that I've heard this evening. In terms of some of the concerns that Mistress Natoli brought up about electric upgrades, you all should know that improvements have happened that have made things a lot easier to do in terms of like being able to split a 240 between two appliances, like a dryer or an EV charger, and the beginning of 120, the sale of 120-volt heat pump water heaters. 350 Sacramento's webpage has a bunch of resources to help people learn about that. In terms of the question about like coupling panel upgrades with other construction, you definitely want to do things upfront when you can, because when your HVAC goes out or your hot water goes out, you don't want to have to wait for a panel. So it's very forward-thinking to include those as part of the process, and I appreciate those inclusions there. In terms of cost issues for doing appliance swapouts, both heat pump water heaters and HVAC have actually been found to be cost-effective, particularly over the lifetime of the appliance. Like with HVAC, for example, you get one appliance, a heat pump, where you had two, a heater and an air conditioner, and that the lifetime cost is actually less. And the cost of gas is going to go up as residential use goes down, and that's going to make electrical appliance an even better deal in the future. For existing residential electrification, specifying and passing compliance alongside the requirement for replacement at burnout is key. Without strong compliance measures, the count can't anticipate, can't anticipate anything besides the 10% compliance that the CEC determined is the average rate of compliance in the state. To put this in perspective, GHG6 is the single largest accounted for GHG reduction in the cap counting. And if this doesn't account for 10% compliance, then the prediction of 177 megatons is way overstated. The county shouldn't count reductions they're not going to get. A concept that requires the county to ensure that all improvements that have been permitted when required, similar to the resale program in Davis, which gets 95% compliance, is the only thing that's going to guarantee substantial compliance. And a compliance measure should be clearly outlined in the cap, or you need to seriously downgrade your expectations of this measure, which I don't want to do. I'd love to see this thing, I, you know, this is a great way to make changes.
Rosie, I need to ask you to kind of wind up your comments if we could, Rosie, please.
Okay. So my, so last, so thank you all, and my last comment is, I challenge the board to go ahead and bring the new building electrification at direct staff to bring it to you by June, because there's so many other models around the states for you to drop in, and it's time to get moving. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for calling. Thank you. Okay. Next caller.
Please send the next caller. Please start with your comment. You'll have two and a half minutes.
My name is Jenny Volk Anderson, and I live in Supervisor Desmond's district. I've been long concerned with environmental issues and been active in Sierra Club and recently in 350 Sacramento. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for holding this public workshop so that people could air their concerns about the county's cap. But as a mother and grandmother, I am most alarmed by the future my grandchildren and all children face in this world irrefutably altered by a warming climate. For the last four years, late summer and autumn have seen wildfires of unprecedented size in nearby counties choking our skies with smoke and causing children to stay inside, miss athletic events, sometimes miss school, and for some suffer bouts of asthma. The latest UN IPCC report tells us that this is only going to get worse. On a personal level, my son and his family, along with some of their friends, are talking about moving out of Sacramento County and the state, seeking temporary rest from the worst local impacts, the fires, the drought, the poor air quality, the extreme summer temperatures. But I've spent most of my career and the majority of my volunteer life working with children and youth from marginalized and underserved communities. They're the ones that are most affected by climate change, living in communities with too few shade trees and parks, too much automobile exhaust and other pollutants. They have little opportunity to escape this, and they live in neighborhoods that definitely could use to be rehabilitated and revitalized. Climate change demands immediate and meaningful action at every level, including by the county. One of the major issues that has been brought up a lot tonight with the latest version of the cap is that it still fails to meaningfully address sprawl development. Instead of focusing on revitalizing these older suburban areas and commercial zones by encouraging and funding infill, the county is allowing more greenfield developments that will destroy habitat and farmlands and require more roads and urban services, increasing vehicle miles traveled, and therefore the greenhouse gas emissions that the cap is intended to significantly reduce. And I agree with most of what was said by the environmental group tonight. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for calling. I appreciate your comments. Next caller.
Please send the next caller. Can you start with your comment? You'll have two and a half minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you so much for hearing my comment. My name is Kim Oldhoff, and my supervisor is Phil Serna. I'm a mother, and I want to go to bed, and I'm sure you all do too. And I'm also a biologist, and I volunteer for the Sacramento Valley Conservancy and the National Audubon Society, and I'm also a certified climate steward through UCA&amp;R. I'd like to echo a lot of the sentiments from ECOs and 350 Sacramento. And I'll go very quickly, because I wrote a letter and I went on and on in the letter. So I'll be very quick. First of all, I feel this cap needs to undergo a sequel review for 2022. The addendum doesn't seem to effectively address all the new issues, like the atmospheric carbon has risen by 25 parts per million since 2011, et cetera. And so a new environmental review is important. Secondly, a lot of people have said this too, that it needs to be written in a way that's clear, and whether intentionally or not, the draft communicates a lack of commitment to taking action. And this sets a low bar for effectiveness. And lastly, just a note about carbon farming. The county of Sacramento really should join the California Association of Resource Conservation Districts. Nearly the entire state has joined this network. This partnership provides a wealth of existing knowledge, regional experts, and an existing network for carbon farming. The partners in this include many state and federal agencies, US military, and numerous conservancies and organizations. And I don't know why the county of Sacramento wants to go solo without this existing pool of expertise. I just, I think this is an important opportunity that's being missed. And I'm really passionate about this issue because I really am scared and I want my child to, to, we'll have to adapt, but for my child to not suffer. Thank you for your time tonight. Good night.
Good night, and thank you, Kim.
Please send the next caller. Please start with your comment, and you'll have two and a half minutes. And if you could, please turn the meeting down in the background.
I am really passionate about this issue because I'm scared and I want...
Caller.
Yeah.
Hi. If you could turn the meeting down in the background, and please start with your comment. You'll have two and a half minutes.
You're not ready for me now, are you?
Go ahead, please.
I am, I am Amy Terrell. I'm a resident of Supervisor Frost's district, and I'm associated with 350 Sacramento. Climate change is happening now. This climate action plan has a number of good elements in it, but it needs to reduce the biggest source of greenhouse gases, vehicle carbon emissions. This plan before you does not meet this objective. Please ask for a climate plan that also reduces vehicle carbon emissions. Action elements include no sprawl development, prioritize infill development, maximize bicycle corridors and public transportation options. As Steve Wertz observed, we made huge lifestyle changes when COVID came to town. Since COVID concerns seem to have subsided, we've all observed the tremendous increase in local traffic, which shows me that if left to ourselves, we as individuals are generally unwilling to make personal changes, even when it benefits the greater community. That's why we need a strong enforceable plan to reduce Sacramento County's vehicle carbon emissions. I urge you to be strong. We are in a climate emergency now. Ask for a climate action plan that will aim to reduce vehicle emissions is enforceable and measurable, so we can brag that Sacramento County is making its targets. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate your comments. Okay. Next caller.
Can you please send the next caller? Hi, caller. Please start with your comment. You'll have two and a half minutes.
Good evening again. Steve Sander, resident of District 2, SAC EJ CGC and the Climate Coalition. I have followed the county's climate action planning efforts since at least 2017, and like many of you, have been frustrated with the lack of progress. This latest iteration, while an improvement, still falls short of the mark. I agree with the previous callers, there needs to be more accountability at the forefront in terms of what if we miss the target, and will it trigger more aggressive policies? The cap does not even attempt to get the county to net zero carbon emissions by 2030, despite that being what the board has explicitly called for in recognizing and declaring a climate emergency. And it's important, this discontinuity with other policy documents is going to impede progress and justify future foot-dragging when it comes to making meaningful emissions reductions. The emissions reductions laid out in the cap must get us to net zero by 2030 to harmonize with these other policy documents. Most troubling of all is that there appears to be a deficit in understanding on the part of county staff when it comes to issues related to environmental justice principles. Take, for example, GHG24, increased organic waste diversion. The chief implementation step is to have the county streamline the permitting process. However, when it comes to organic waste, for one thing, it isn't even the county's permitting process that is the biggest impediment to citing organic waste facilities. Of course, the permit processes can always be streamlined, but much of that is outside the county's purview, so this doesn't actually quantifiably reduce GHG emissions whatsoever. Furthermore, we should not cause harm to overburdened communities by streamlining the permit process in such a way that it ends up encouraging facility citing in disadvantaged communities. With respect, I urge you to have the planning staff take this document back and revise it so that it is in harmony with the 2030 carbon neutrality goals laid out previously. Then they need to run it by the community before bringing it back to the board. And with that, thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Steve.
Please send the next caller.
How many in queue?
We have four.
Okay.
Hi, caller. Please start with your comment. You have two and a half minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Corbett. I am a county resident in Supervisor Frost's district. I'm here tonight on behalf of Bradford White Corporation. On behalf of Bradford White Corporation, we would like to thank the County Board of Supervisors for the opportunity to comment on the county of Sacramento's revised Climate Action Plan, specifically as it relates to the proposed implementation dates and the feasibility of greenhouse gas measures requiring existing buildings to adopt all-electric water heating technology. Bradford White is an American-owned, full-line manufacturer of residential, commercial, and industrial products for water heating, space heating, and combination heating and water storage products. In the state of California, a significant number of individuals, families, and job providers rely on our products for their hot water and space heating needs. A shift to require that existing commercial, non-residential, and residential buildings be retrofitted to use all-electric water heating technology will require significant time, money, and collaboration by manufacturers and plumbing trade associations to train the workforce to ensure quality installations. As proposed by the cap, this is not an effort that can be done in a matter of months, but will take years as technology becomes commercially available. There is not enough commercially available heat pump water heater technology, and creating an ordinance for existing buildings to require the use of electric heat pump water heater technology will require the county building authority to grant exceptions to use readily available natural gas equipment. While some building owners and homeowners plan ahead to replace equipment, emergency replacements are unavoidable and require the owner to act quickly to restore hot water services. Without readily available equipment, infrastructure, and contractors trained in electric heat pump water heater technology to support an emergency changeout, an owner will have to install a natural gas water heater or boiler. Bradford White strongly suggests that the county revisit the proposed measure implementation dates. While existing buildings represent the bulk of the opportunity to decarbonize the county as identified in the cap, much of the existing building stock is historical and are not constructed in today's building standards. Therefore, it increases the complexity of retrofitting to all-electric water heating. It is imperative to include both local business owners and manufacturers in the conversation regarding electrifying existing buildings. Without a broader group of stakeholders and conversations, we are very concerned with the timing and strategy that would be proposed and how it would limit the success of these measures. Lastly, we strongly urge the County Board of Supervisors to consider the financial burden of greenhouse gas measure four, five, six, and seven, and other measures that may be placed on the constituents. Even with the support of local incentives from Sacramento Municipal Utility District and incentives from the state, the cost of equipment and necessary improvements to support converting mixed-fuel buildings and homes to all-electric can cost business owners and homeowners thousands more compared to replacing like-for-like equipment. Bradford White thanks the planning staff and county supervisors for the opportunity to provide feedback on the county's cap. We are available for further discussion if anybody would like to reach out to us. Thank you very much. Great night.
Great. Thank you. And maybe you can leave your contact information with the clerk's office if the staff wants to follow up, so that'd be helpful. Thanks. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I very much will. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next caller.
If you'll please send the, send the next caller. Please start with your comment. You have two and a half minutes.
Good evening. My name is Gabi Trejo. I'm the executive director for Sacramento Act, and first of all, I want to thank the hard work that the county staff has put together and Todd and his team. As you all know, we at Sacramento Act work with congregations across our county, and as people of faith, we really are called to care for creation. And we are pretty concerned that the proposed cap does not provide a specific and measurable action plan to... action plan to reduce greenhouse gases and we don't feel like it addresses the current impact on the most vulnerable in our communities. And our hope is for measures are that you prioritize infills and community revalidation and resilience hubs, as was mentioned earlier. In addition, we are in support of the EJ, having six EJ reps in the emergency task force. And last but not least, or someone earlier made a comment referring to Oscar's graph earlier, and we are in agreement that we want to see Oscar's graph go from all nos to all yeses. And that's all for tonight. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Gabby. Okay, next caller.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comment and you'll have two and a half minutes.
Hello. My name is Chris Paris and I'm a 28-year resident of Sacramento and then also a retired engineer. My main reason for hanging on till 10 o'clock at night is to just urge this board to please get moving with your plan. I fully support the climate declaration, but I camp a lot and I travel around the state and I'm seeing the sobering effects of our worsening air quality and our trees that are stressed and drying from drought. AQIs are regularly over 50 and in the unhealthy range. So I submitted a letter today because I just saw it was on the agenda tonight with some immediate action proposals that I hope the board will consider and look at my letter, which has much more data in it. I want to talk about just two of those items briefly since I only have two minutes. The first one is trees. The cap talks a lot about urban forest, fully support that, but our large trees are highly stressed from drought and we need much more, and they have much more carbon capture capability than small trees. Our current policy for when trees are removed in the county is to replace trees one for one with a 15-gallon tree. I propose the board implement a declaration to have tree removals based on a carbon-neutral policy that requires an evaluation of the carbon capture capability of the removed tree, which you can find online as I did in my letter from a calculators like from NC State University, and then replace those trees with enough 15-gallon or other trees to equal the carbon capture capability of the tree that was removed. This is really important because we are, I'm seeing trees removed in many project applications and with each large tree removed, we are going net negative in greenhouse gas emissions. A large tree removes 107 pounds per year of CO2 versus only 15 pounds of CO2 for a smaller, young tree. My second item I recommend, which again is, has more support in my letter, is regarding the largest issue of greenhouse gas emissions from on-road vehicles. I fully support EVs, but they're not always practical for some county uses and they rely on a power grid that we all know we have problems with from wildfires. So where we cannot go EV and where we need to use gas power, I urge the board to start directing the use of flex fuel vehicles and the purchase of only flex fuel vehicles. They are, can use both biofuel and gas and it's an imperfect solution, but they burn clean. E85 is cheaper and you can also maybe use all this recycled food waste mentioned in GHG 24 that we have to collect and use it for ethanol.
Chris, I need to ask you, wind up, please, if you could.
Yes, I'm almost done.
Okay.
I, I did a quick estimate in my letter and for every 100 county vehicles that you can convert to flex fuel use from gas, you can save 230 metric tons per year of CO2 emissions. And you can see that in my letter.
Okay.
And you can also push for E85 pumps. Thank you very much. Bye.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for staying with us till 10. Thanks. Okay, next caller.
We currently have one caller on hold and one caller in queue.
Okay.
Okay. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comment. You have two and a half minutes.
Good evening, supervisors and staff. My name is Dr. Glayal Saba. I'm a member of Sacramento Climate Coalition as well as 350 Sacramento and PSR. I wanted to mention that I'm in Supervisor Serna's district. I believe that the county staff has taken much of the community's recommendation into this cap. I want to express my appreciation for the hard work that has gone into this document, for example, including the 2030 carbon neutrality goal and the numerous measures to reduce greenhouse gases mentioned in the cap. It shows that you are acting with a clear sense of urgency to avoid catastrophic climate change. Regarding transportation, the greatest greenhouse gas contributor, this revised cap addresses some reduction of VMTs, increases, increasing charging stations, promotes walking and other active transportation means. I would recommend much greater emphasis on eliminating sprawl and reconfiguration in addition of many more bikeways which are protected from car lanes if we are to inspire more timid riders and their children to feel safe to commute by bicycle and other active transportation means. I would also urge you to add resilience hubs into the planning. I also applaud your carbon sequestration efforts. In addition, I would suggest requiring that at least 50% of new development and parking lot trees be native trees which can withstand prolonged droughts and floods. I would also like to see much stronger attention to the issue of our unhoused neighbors. Climate change is affecting them in a disproportionate way already and unless we address their issues such as safe places for them to camp, basic sanitation services and support services to help them out of their difficult condition, we will see misery and increased loss of life. About the question of costs, as you know, numerous studies have been done worldwide which have shown that though costly, taking the efforts to rapidly decarbonize will save us much more in the long run. Consider initiating a committee to research and consider forming a bank, a public bank of Sacramento, a joint venture with city, county, and even SMUD as has been done in 25 other states and 18 California municipalities, including San Francisco and LA. This could safely generate funds to defray many of the costs associated with building the green infrastructure, generating the sustainable jobs, et cetera, all of which are necessary to achieve carbon neutrality and community resiliency. To summarize, according to climate science, we only have till 2030 and that window is closing fast. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you for your, your call and for your thoughtful comments.
Thank you.
Okay, next caller, last caller. Is that correct? Okay.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Two and a half.
Good evening, Chair Natoli and members of the board. This is John Lane. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Hi, John. We can hear you.
Perfect. Thanks. I'm with Tyker Materials and I'm sorry that I can't be there this evening. This is a little bit strange. I, I wanted to first commend the county for working on the climate, climate action plan. It's, there is a lot of good things in here, but there was a couple items that I wanted to just bring to the board's attention and hopefully we can look at a little bit closer at them. And, and one of them is GHGA, which I know several folks have mentioned this evening and so I won't belabor that one. But I will, I will say that I did call our fleet's manager who's been with Tyker for over 20 years today just to confirm that I wasn't too far out on a limb. And he confirmed that, that, that requiring tier four equipment on, on construction projects would be highly problematic, not just for Tyker, but many of the, the larger construction firms because of the large equipment such as D11s, switcher dozers, 988 loaders, 637 scrapers, which we use on big jobs. Those are not available or very limitedly available. And, and Tyker is a priority customer of Caterpillar. And so when Caterpillar says they can't give us a D11, that's pretty significant. And so using the word require would be very problematic. So I'm happy to make our fleet's manager and I certain that some of the other large contractors could do the same to, to talk more with the county about how to, how to frame that one because right now it says require. And what I would like to do is recommend using the word prioritize and, and require when, when those equipment is available. So if we could demonstrate that it's not, you know, that it isn't available, then, then we should get a little bit of wiggle room there because it was just not there and you can't get it and you shouldn't be able to do it. The other one that I wanted to, to bring to the board's attention was temp 07, which is the use of cool pavement technology. We did meet with the county back in 2018 and we brought comments there. And right now what it says is require the use of cool pavement technology. And the word require does not really give a lot of room. And the reality is, is that while heater urban, you know, the heat island effect is real, the problem is if you require cool pavements, what it doesn't account for is full lifecycle assessments. In some cases, it actually, there's more of a global impact if you're using certain technologies in certain places. And the reality is in some places and some projects, it makes more sense to use one cool pavement technology or another. And so, and, and the, the county used, utilized some of the, the methodology and the referencing of the, of the, the cool pavement research center out of UC Davis. And we contacted them recently and they pointed out that several of the key points that they made in their reports actually said in some cases, cool, cool pavement technologies were actually made it worse. So what I'd like to do is recommend that we talk a little bit more about that and potentially change that require to a prioritize when it's demonstrated that a particular cool pavement technology would provide a net positive benefit. And that way you capture, you don't put cool pavements where they really don't need to be. So in some cases, trees, for example, would be the way to go.
John, I need you to summarize. John, if you can summarize.
So that's it.
Okay.
That's it. I did submit an email that included those and hopefully the board will consider those. We'd like to make ourselves available and thanks for your time this evening.
Great. Thank you, John. Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Is that our last caller?
Yeah, that's your last caller.
Okay. All right. Then I'll bring it back to the board. I know we have several board members punched up here and have Todd come back to the podium. I do want to thank all of our speakers, all the presenters, and we had a significant amount of information presented this evening, a lot of comments and suggestions, very thoughtfully presented. So thank you to all who weighed in and waited patiently to offer their comments. And so with that, I'll bring it back to the board and I'll go to my colleagues, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Frost, and Supervisor Desmond in that order. And Todd, I guess you're prepared to receive comments and offer any other information that you may have compiled during the course of testimony. So, Phil?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Start by also sharing my thanks for all the patient public speakers, both here with us in chambers and those that called in and to those that gave us a lot to think about in terms of the presentations that preceded public testimony. I want to thank you as well. I, I want to hearken back to the declaration of a climate emergency because it's been referenced so liberally here tonight. That was something that I was very interested in bringing to the board, as my colleagues will recall, back in the fall of 2020 and knew that it would precipitate not just checking a box to feel good temporarily about at least acknowledging that we do have a climate emergency, but that it was by design going to inspire us to better connect what we have in our general plan along with a sensible, again, very implementable and thoughtful climate action plan. So that has been a monumental task, to say the least, to get us to this place. And I want to certainly express my wholehearted thanks to Todd, who has been the point, running point on this for years now. And someone earlier kind of tongue-in-cheek made the comment that he hopes that Todd doesn't have anything else on his plate. Well, I can attest that it's overflowing, has been for some time. So, so again, thank you for all that you've invested professionally, Todd, into getting us to this point. I do want to start by addressing something that was a bit common to some of the criticisms that were articulated here tonight in terms of SEQA. And so I'd address this to County Council to hopefully briefly inform the board and put on the record her thoughts about, about the need for, for an EIR, for SEQA, full-fledged SEQA review, because that has been so, again, so common throughout the stream of, of comments, some of them tonight. And I just want to make sure that we have a satisfactory level of confidence that, you know, we, we feel firmly that, at least from a legal standpoint, what we've done thus far in terms of acknowledging the review that's associated with the general plan kind of fulfills the legal necessity to, to do so and does not necessarily require much more in terms of SEQA analysis.
Thank you, supervisor. So you asked for me to respond briefly and I will, given the lateness of the hour, far more detail can be provided, but an overview and in essence, as you know, and as the board knows, EIRs are informational documents and there are different types of EIRs. An EIR was already prepared and was adopted by this board and this cap is a mitigation measure from that EIR. To say, I've heard comments that there was no environmental review, that is not accurate. The county did choose the type of EIR and SEQA does allow lead agencies the discretion to determine which type of EIR is best. And so in this circumstance, the county decided in collaboration with its consultants, Ascent Environmental, that the addendum was appropriate because some updates and some additions were needed. But overall, the negative impacts or significant effects that are associated with GHG, there was no new significant effects that had not previously been addressed in the, in the older EIR. And also the severity of the impacts that were previously identified were not to such an extent that would necessitate a supplemental EIR. And I will point out that one of the differences between the supplemental EIR and the addendum is really the review process. And in this situation, the county actually has done a public review and noticing that is commensurate with a supplemental EIR process. So again, Ascent is here and they're going to provide additional information that really distinguishes why our county is different from San Diego. San Diego, as we may know, has had problems with getting their cap adopted and San Diego was referenced in some of the comment letters that we received. But we do believe that the addendum is a legally defensible document at this point, but reasonable minds can differ. And because of that, we certainly are willing to and will review the comment letters that have come in recently and address and, and take all those into consideration.
Great. Thank you, June. I think that's very helpful because otherwise I think if those comments just linger without some response, I would hate to think that some might leave tonight's workshop thinking that the board is being somehow dismissive of it. I don't think that's the case at all. I think it's been well explained by our County Council as to the approach that we've taken and, and an approach that we've taken in consultation with other SEQA experts. So appreciate that. I'll be, I'll try and be brief and conclude my remarks. I know others in the queue and I'll try not to be redundant here, but I think we heard a number of speakers speak to the problems that I mentioned earlier for me regarding GHG 30 and the, the carbon neutrality, neutrality requirement on future growth and its built-in inequities relative to the county's disposition on future USB and UPA adjustments. I think that's just a very problematic element of what is new to this most recent draft of the, of the plan. So I'm hopeful that... So, um, I'm hopeful that, um, in terms of takeaways for staff, that, um, that can either be eliminated or somehow amended, uh, so that it avoids some of those built-in, built-in inequities and, um, and some of the mystery behind how it would actually be implemented. Uh, I heard, uh, from a number of parties about their concerns over, uh, looking at all electric, um, households. It's interesting because I've heard from some developers that think it's very problematic. I've heard from other development representatives that, um, are actually very intent on, um, on that being a, not just a, um, a part of the new comprehensive plans that they're processing, but as an amenity. So it seems like it's kind of all over the board in terms of where, uh, and from whom we're, we're hearing about the concerns over electrification. I tend to think that this, if we're going to segment out what's in the plan, um, and consider them in terms of what's realistic, what's practically implementable, um, I tend to believe that going to all-electric in the not-so-distant future, um, is doable. And I understand some of the concerns over, uh, doing that. But I think as, certainly as technology considers, continues to advance, um, that's one way that, uh, I think master plans, um, can succeed in, um, meeting or exceeding our, um, general plan goals, uh, for GHG reduction. Um, I think that was, oh, and I do want to respond to the concerns expressed by the, the realtors. I don't think that that's, um, uh, an unreasonable, uh, concern that they've expressed and others on the board have already addressed that, but I wanted to be on record, uh, saying that I don't necessarily disagree with, uh, that concern and that being over, I think it's GHG six, um, regarding the, uh, the triggers that would require, um, uh, implementation of full electric paneling in residential, uh, structures that could be triggered by things that are not necessarily associated with the need for it. Um, so I, I think that needs, uh, some work and I'm not sure what, uh, the specific direction should be to staff at this point to eliminate or to, uh, to change it. But, um, I think, I think for me, I understand where staff was going with it. I just think, again, from a practical implementation standpoint, um, that, that too has some built-in inequities that I have concern with. Um, other than that, I, I, you know, again, I, I mentioned earlier, half the room thinks we've not gone far enough, the other half thinks we've gone too far. Um, in some spaces, that might be considered an indication that we're doing things right. We also heard from a number of critics that, uh, were very vocal, uh, with regard to previous drafts, acknowledged that we've actually come a long way. And that has everything to do with, I think, our staff, uh, being very diligent in listening to the community, um, all, you know, all, uh, corners of the community, including industry and including, uh, environmental advocates. So, uh, Mr. Chair, I, uh, will conclude there and, uh, offer those, uh, comments as kind of the, um, collective directive that we're interested in providing staff, uh, tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Next Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair Natoli. Uh, first I want to thank Todd Smith and the county staff and all the public who participated in this huge Herculean effort to, um, put together our climate action plan. I think we have a good start. I have, I'm going to try and be quick with my comments. Supervisor Serna made a comment regarding more, um, more goal versus prescriptive and, while still being effective. And I think, um, that resonated with me. Um, I think, uh, the GHG 30 is challenging. The carbon neutral by 2030 could essentially, um, create some huge obstacles for housing starts and, you know, put a halt to housing starts. And so I, I hope we can make some adjustments to ensure that we don't negatively impact housing starts. Chris Norm made a comment from BIA on the, you know, the increased cost per house of three to 5,000. Um, I, you know, I get that. I, I understand that. To, to the home buyer, it's an increased cost. To those who live in an existing home to retrofit their home, um, it's much more expensive. I know because I did it. I think I paid about 60,000 to retrofit my house. I do have a gas, uh, tankless water heater, so I'm, I guess I'm possibly going to have to change, still change something out. I don't know. But I can say that the benefit is real. Uh, my utility bill went from 375 to $50 a month or less. So, uh, depending on the season. So I, I, I get that it's a higher housing cost and here we are, we're still adding cost to housing while we have a housing, um, a lack of housing. I wanted to comment, um, someone's talked about, we need to change what we're doing and stop approving greenfield development. And I, I wanted to briefly comment on that. I don't think, uh, you know, everybody realizes that, that the developers oftentimes, uh, you know, land in California isn't inexpensive and developers often buy land and sit on it for decades before they're able to pull, you know, develop it and pull it together. And so we can't just, you can't just change, you know, the, the potential of growth. You can't just switch over without just stopping it completely. And I think we have to be sensitive to that, given our housing crisis that we have right now. Um, I love the comment regarding the increasing housing in ways that don't increase commuter, commuter distancing, distances. And I think, um, keeping that in mind with land planning and complete communities, um, it, um, those are ways that we can end this, everyone drives to downtown to their job. They, they live and work and educate and recreate in, in a complete community that has walking and, and all the, all the good stuff. So there's, I, I see the beauty in the cap. On GHG six, uh, the home alterations, I'm very sensitive to that, being a former, um, in real estate finance and real estate investing. Uh, and updating appliances and permits, I appreciate what Aaron Teague said, um, regarding the realtor's concerns about existing, you know, homeowners and investors who have, um, you know, who could potentially be really, um, hit hard by, uh, those permitting requirements. So I'm hoping we can make some changes there. I, um, heard someone in, uh, of the public, I thought it was a sincerely, you know, thinking about changing all the gas stations to require EV. And I just wanted to comment that there are business entrepreneurs who are actually putting EV in their retail centers just to encourage people to come there. And so I'm not sure that's really going to necessarily be a problem. I think the free enterprise system might, you know, start to kick in, um, with that. All gasoline stations, oh, um, so, um, I do think if, you know, we're converting to all-electric and solar, I think we should continue, we have been, but we should continue to be sensitive to do our due diligence regarding how EMF radiation impacts our, our general public health. I think that's something to be cognizant of. And I wanted to mention rural fires. It was policy changes, it was policy that changed the way we manage our, our forests that changed, um, that actually created or exacerbated the challenges that we now have in our forests. And so I think it's important that we, um, include somehow in, in this plan, I don't know if this is appropriate, so you can tell me if it's not, but in my district, I have a couple of areas that are very cognizant of the, the danger of the fire, um, safety evacuation plans and the potential fire because of the biomass buildup over years that's going to cost millions of dollars to, um, mediate. And so, um, I don't know if that's, you know, inappropriate, something to incorporate, but I think that's an important part of the fire safety portion of it, the wildfire devastation. GHG eight, um, I support building, uh, building in some flexibility regarding construction equipment of it and, and its availability. And those are the ends of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Desmond.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thanks, the speakers, first of all, the ones who gutted it out here till the end. Oscar from 350 Sacramento and I, Steve up there from SMUD and, and BIA. So thank you for sticking with us. I, I also want to thank my, my colleagues and county staff. I mean, I, I think that this is a tremendous step for Sacramento County. Really applaud my colleagues for the, the climate emergency declaration. I was not here, uh, but I'm supportive of it. And I think we have a lot to be proud of. There are so many wonderful, uh, elements in this, in this cap that are going to, um, really result in profound changes. One thing I want to address, and Oscar, since you're the only representative from the environmental advocacy community here, maybe, maybe pass on to others that, you know, any ideas for infill in these urban unincorporated, uh, communities? I'd love to hear, and you know, I asked, asked Todd the question about, you know, what's working, what's not working? And, and I, I don't think it's as simple as just prohibiting greenfield development and then all the developers will come and invest in the, in the, uh, in infill development. I don't think it's, it's that simple. Um, but you know, we have, we have the infill incentive, uh, fee program, we have density bonuses, we have the SECOG programs, we have a planning department that is very hospitable and welcomes infill development projects with open arms. But it's just a tough nut to crack in the unincorporated areas. So I'm, uh, Oscar, I'm, I'm open to any suggestions that you can, you can, uh, bring to me certainly to how we can, um, uh, get more infill development. Specific comments, I, I share the comments of, uh, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Frost with respect to, uh, GHG six and, and 30 and eight as well. Um, and it really, you know, I think with some of the other comments, what, uh, BIA spoke about in terms of feasibility, making sure it's feasible and that we have some flexibility in the mitigation. I mean, I think that should certainly guide us. The other thing I want to mention, Todd, is, um, uh, measure temp zero seven, the cool pavement measure. You know, when I first saw that one, my, my, my fear was, oh my God, is this going to result in higher costs to get our roads repaired? And I'm sure Supervisor Natoli shares that concern with me. But I would like to, to have a more of a discussion with you about that because I did, I did read a little bit up on the, the cool pavement and, uh, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. So I, I think we should take into account maybe neighborhoods where there is a lot of shading on the roadways, maybe it's not necessary. And, and I'd like to learn more about the costs actually of it. And then finally, just want to thank you, Todd, because I know, you know, I, I haven't been here as long as anybody else on this dais, but, uh, I know you've been pouring your heart and soul into this thing and, and taking all the slings and arrows from, from both sides. And I'll tell you, this really would have been a home run if, uh, in the government operations measures, you had added a measure for motorcycle parking in the basement here. I would have really appreciated that. But, um, anyway, thank you for all your, thank you for all your, your work, Todd. And that's, uh, that's it for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. I do have some, some comments and, and want to, again, join in the thanks, certainly thank Todd, thank the folks from Ascent, uh, and all the folks that worked on this. Um, I wanted to talk to a couple of items that haven't been spoken to here by my colleagues. One of the areas where you get one of the greatest, uh, reductions is a GHG one, 147,000 tons by 2030. Uh, and that works through carbon farming, sequestration, farming practices. And I look at that, I hear the conversation, obviously the direction around infill, uh, and desirability of that, uh, some of the desirability of electrification and, um, but some of the challenges around that. I also hear comments regarding what the county, as a large organization, one that has a large fleet, we have over 4,000 vehicles, not all those are light duty by any means. Um, I don't know what percentage of our fleet are electric vehicles or flex fuel. I don't think very large part of it. Uh, that's a strategy that we can take on ourselves. I hear the discussion about airports. But one of the things that I think is a theme here, and it goes beyond the words on paper and the, uh, not the, just the aspirations, but also the regulation that would come with this. And I think it's going to require this county to be innovative in looking at how we provide the resources and funding to back up what we put in here in words. And, and I say it with all degree of seriousness and certainly recognize that our budget has many limitations on it. But if the expectation is by 2030, you're going to incentivize, uh, farming practices and get 147,000 tons annually of, uh, reduction, then it's going to require certainly the cooperation, but, uh, you know, the resources that help farmers and ranchers and people in the rural parts of this county who would be a major contributor to achieving the goals of this plan, someone's going to have to step up with the money to do that. It's not all about the money. And so I, I say it with all seriousness, I'm not going to be here in a few months, but I will tell you that my experience, what I'm drawing upon in my comments is, is that working cooperatively, and I think John and Todd and others have, have, you know, built a relationship and there may be other market incentives, but if you're really going to be real about that, then you're going to, and I've seen success very recent, current as we're talking here this evening, um, with the drought relief program that's been implemented by Department of Water Resources, funded, uh, through grants through the, the Delta Conservancy, where farmers are stepping up, coming forward voluntarily to either change their farming practices, to, uh, eliminate or alleviate some of the water usage and the pressure on water usage to improve water quality in the Delta, but also to make water available in the river. And yes, they're being paid on a per acre basis. It's a one, one time, one year. Some of the conversion might be, might have more, um, lasting effects behind it. There's going to be some measurable outcomes and performance measures. And I guess my, I'm suggesting that if in fact we're serious about this as a county and we can be innovative, and I'm going to talk about growth here in a moment and, and infill, then I think that's going to require by 2024, because that's what we're saying we're going to do, that we better find a way to, to fund that in all seriousness. And that may mean a general fund commitment, but I think that if the will is there, you can actually achieve that. You can certainly enhance the farming practices and the, in the, uh, offsets for, uh, the, the, the carbon, but you also can, I think, help have more sustainable farming. So it's not about just sending money to farmers and ranchers, but working through a program. Sequestration can, can, uh, is real, both underground, but certainly on, uh, year-to-year practices. But it's going to require some funding. And, and I think if we think we're going to do this just by going out and being friendly with the farmers and saying, hey, you can change your fertilizer or your farming, um, you know, practices, that's not how it's going to work. And so I say that in all seriousness, with a lot of respect to our budget and to my colleagues who are going to be here, uh, for the years to come. But I think that's real. I think it can be done, but it's going to require funding. Likewise, I'm going to speak to infill for a moment. It's great that we have in there and I'm very supportive. I've supported from the get-go when we did the general plan, the thousand dollar infill fee. Yes, it has an impact on housing costs and we've got some, uh, certainly some resistance by some of those who are bringing forward plans in the process. We won't realize that funding for many years to come in any significant source. And if we're relying on that to help us with infill incentives, then I think, uh, we're fooling ourselves if that's going to be a pot of money that's going to be available immediately. And so I'm going to suggest that for part of the consideration, again, looking at being real about this plan, is that, uh, you know, you can bank on that money at some point in time if it is tied to future growth and development, but you better find a way, and we, I'm still a part of this organization, is that look at a way to fund that upfront. If we're going to incentivize infill and maybe with the, the, you know, the, uh, you know, backdrop that at some point in time we'll receive those monies, but, you know, it's not going to happen just because we say we're going to put a thousand dollars a house. It's going to take years and years and years. In the meantime, opportunities to do the infill are going to be missed. And so I'm suggesting that with that and certainly agricultural, uh, capture here, that we're going to need to, as a county, if we're really real about it, talk about how we're going to fund those things. And now, again, it doesn't have to necessarily be general fund, but either some form of grant monies and/or combining it with maybe some things that SR, SHRA would have available or the sanitation district, we have good partners. But it's going to require us to step up because again, all the good words, all the good intent are not going to happen just because we tell people you're going to have to do certain things. That's a part of it. It's, we're going to have to take the initiative and do them as a county. And it's going to take resources and commitment beyond just the planning part of it. And so I want to just And so, I want to just talk about one other component that I think is very real, as I'm listening to this evening, and that's on the electrification. I think that has a great promise, but you're going into neighborhoods where, and again, Todd responded this evening and a couple of weeks ago when we had the housing element, about the fact that the vintage of the housing, a lot of that are in neighborhoods where you have middle-class working families, you have housing stock that may be, you know, 40, 50, 60 years old, but still has great utility, but if we're going to encourage this and not just say it has to be done upon the resale or some of the life cycle of an appliance, again, I think as a county, if we're going to be innovative and actually see this happen, we can partner with S MUD, we can partner with our other agencies, but we as a county are going to have to step up, and it means finding a way to fund that. Now, that's a big, you know, a big climb, and if we didn't add into it doing more at the airport, which is an enterprise, and doing more with our fleet, we're talking about a big dollar commitment. But I'm a big believer that if we're going to be bold about this and certainly recognize the balance that goes into it, and my colleagues have talked about that, that I think we're going to have to find a way and be strategic about it, we can't do all of it. But if we're going to be real about gaining the necessary compliance and be real about what 2030 is on the horizon, then we're going to have to find ways to fund this, and I don't know what that, and again, and I'm not just looking at you, but I just be creative about this, and I would challenge my board members and certainly even in this, in this year, talking about some of these things, and maybe start out small, but these are ambitious goals, targets, and if we're going to regulate folks, I think we need to set the example by funding some of these things and not just saying, well, we've got a fee waiver program or, you know, we'll help put a sewer lining over here when we get to it. It's got to be bigger than that. And I don't know if that means going to the voters of the county, or if it means, you know, carving out parts of our budget on an annual basis, but again, to achieve these things, I think they're not only ambitious, but they're realizable, but they're going to be realized if we put the dollars behind them and then put the effort that we've seen in developing this plan. So, I offer those as my comments, I think there are a lot of good elements here, I think GH30 certainly presents a real challenge, and, but likewise, if we continue then to move in that direction and try to find balance, the balance is going to be in how we finance and put together the pieces to make this thing work. And so, I'm going to leave it with that, but I'm encouraged, I think we can do more as an organization, but if we're going to think big, we're going to have to find a way to fund this. Otherwise, I think we're going to end up falling short, going to disappoint ourselves and a whole lot of other folks. So, I don't know if that's helped you with your notes, Todd, but again, you don't, you know, carry the bankbook, certainly this board has authority over, over the budget, but I put that as a respectful challenge to all of us in thinking about how we're going to make this happen, and encourage the infill we find is desirable, you know, do our county facilities, encourage folks to do things in the private sector, but it's not just about regulation, it's about actually stepping up and funding some of these activities. So, those are my comments. Thanks. Todd, the hour's late? Oh, Patrick, you just punched up while I was talking, sorry, go ahead. Patrick.
Thank you, Chair. I won't repeat, I said enough earlier, so I won't repeat all that, and I agree with so much that's been said tonight. But, a couple of things, one is, I just find throughout the document that it is, I mean, the word prescriptive is being used, and we have to be somewhat prescriptive, I mean, this is something we are, you know, going to be driving, so I'm not, you know, faulting it so much of that, but it seems like there are areas in here in which, you know, we always look at government telling people what to do, but a lot of this is, we need to reward people for doing the right thing. So, I just think as an overall theme is to look, and for example, some of it, for example, I brought up earlier, the, in Appendix F is the streamlining, the planning process, and the reasoning for not doing it, one is because it's health and safety, but you don't have to compromise health and safety to streamline the planning process. And another one, you know, was that, you know, it pays, you know, that that's how we pay for the programs, but, you know, we're going to have to make an investment, as the Chair just said, we're going to have to make an investment. So, sometimes, you know, and I know, Ann, you're looking at really taking a fine-toothed comb to our planning and building process over the next year, and maybe, you know, have that lens as to how we can do things that don't necessarily cost a lot, but to builders and developers, time is money. And so, sometimes that's an incentive enough to, you know, get them to do the right thing. So, I'd like to, you know, look at, really look at that as you go through your process. And then finally, and Todd and I have talked about this, and I do appreciate him reaching out to RT, I still think that we could do more with RT to be a part of this, and I'll give you an example, something that is kind of, you know, quote-unquote, outside the box, but, you know, RT was the first transit district in the nation to offer free bus trips for K-12 students throughout Sacramento County. It started out just a city program because the city paid RT to do it through a variety of means, but then RT came to us, and I met with the general manager as well as our former CEO, and it was, the attitude was, well, we don't do transit. Well, you know, if we're going to make a difference in air quality, transit has to be a part of it, so if we're going to see this realized, we got to get into transit in some degree, that means incorporating them more in our planning, it means working with them on innovative programs like that, because for that, for example, that program alone, you're not only, you know, getting all of those parents off the road, but more importantly, you're creating lifelong users of transit, which is in all of our benefit and which certainly falls in line with this. So, we got to think a little bit more creatively how we work with, as this Chair said, with our various partners in the community. So, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor comments to Todd, do you?
Yes, a couple of things I do want to address. First of all, I've heard a lot of feedback specifically to me, but I do want to acknowledge other staff who have worked on this, it hasn't been my sole responsibility. Todd Taylor and John Lundgren, in his prior capacity, worked very hard to develop this plan with Ascent, so I want to acknowledge their work as well. And then, secondly, I think June alluded to this, there were a couple of points made in one of the presentations about the similarities, or at least perceived similarities between the Sacramento County's approach and San Diego's approach, and I believe it would be beneficial for the board to understand that there are factual differences there. I know the hour is late, but I think it's important to make those distinctions, and so, Ascent is prepared to do that. And then, while Amanda's coming up, I do want to acknowledge that staff has developed responses to a number of the, I'll say, general comments about sprawl in general, putting them in the context of the efforts around the general plan update, the county's growth management strategy. We have provided those in writing to the environmental organizations as well as the members of the board. I'm not going to go over those in detail tonight, but you have them in the record as well.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Amanda, good evening.
And if Flo, if you wouldn't mind pulling up that one PowerPoint.
Thank you, and take your time in doing that. Good evening, my name's Amanda Olegzulin, I'm with Ascent Environmental. Thank you for letting me talk SEQA at this late hour, but I promise not to drone on. Todd wanted me to speak to add a couple key points to the record. County Council offered a great and eloquent summary of why an addendum could be used and is appropriate based on the facts in our particular case. But to start with the addendum, we first have to have an EIR, which County Council pointed out, we have the general plan EIR that identified the cap, and this cap is the evolution, the second phase evolution of carrying out that mitigation measure. SEQA allows this to occur and in fact encourages agencies to use a programmatic environmental impact report such as the general plan EIR to consider it with later activities. But an important distinguish is that you must consider it in light of what's presented in the general plan EIR. The steps by which the county staff have gone through to determine that an addendum is appropriate and why it's factually different from the case in San Diego, is that none of the reasons for requiring a subsequent EIR as outlined in 15162 of SEQA have been triggered. Those requirements are new or substantially more severe environmental impacts from that previously identified in the general plan EIR, changes in circumstances or major revisions, or if there are changes, do those changes result in new significant impacts? It's been raised in comments that the whole environment or regulatory environment surrounding climate change has evolved, and while it's evolved, it has not resulted in any new impacts. So with that, the county determined that it needed to go through a process to assess really whether this cap would have any new significant effects. So, a detailed environmental checklist was prepared, that checklist looked at each environmental section of the general plan EIR, compared it to what was in this cap, including all of the GHG measures, evaluated the impacts of those GHG measures, and then compared it to whether it would create a new significant impact not previously identified. And the results were that no new significant impacts would occur, no mitigation is required with implementation of this cap, and so, it proceeded along the lines of preparing an addendum. And here's, if we can go to, like, third from the bottom, right there, whoops, one back. So, comments raised claiming similarities that the County of San Diego versus Sierra Club case back in 2014 is the situation we have here, and it's factually different. And if we go to the next slide, I'd like to run through some of the premises, the factual premises that were considered in that case. The project is similar, the county adopted a general plan EIR, it then went and prepared a cap and prepared an addendum for that climate action plan. That is the similar factual background in this case, general plan EIR says, a mitigation measure says to prepare a cap. The county has proceeded through Phase 1 and Phase 2 of implementation of that mitigation and is now evolving it into the cap that you have before you today. However, in the county's case, they made implied findings that the cap that they prepared was no different than the mitigation measure identified in the general plan EIR. In our case, county staff stepped back and said, is it different? And if it is different, are there new significant impacts? And that's that detailed analysis that's in the environmental checklist. The other factual premise is on targets and timelines. The cap in the County of San Diego's case relied upon coordination with agencies, there were no specific funding or evidence of progress towards funding, and it did not commit to items within its control. In Sacramento County's case, the cap is enforceable through adopted policy, there is a funding structure, funding and structure in process, the county is committing to improvements within its control, targets have been established, met, and exceeded, and it's consistent with state, currently adopted state standards. With regard to environmental analysis, an addendum was prepared, but that addendum was lacking the substantial evidence stating why it is, why it is the same as the general plan mitigation measure previously adopted. In our case, as I've stated, we've gone through the exercise to determine whether it would be substantially different from that previously considered. And in the end, it, the, there was, we provided substantial evidence to support our conclusions. And finally, commenters and stakeholders in the Sacramento County case offered feasible mitigation, which the county, San Diego County declined to adopt. In our case, all feasible greenhouse gas measures are included, and where they can be quantified have been quantified, no significant impacts associated with the measures identified in the plan have been identified to date, so therefore, no additional SEQA mitigation measures are required. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you. Any questions of representative? Good. Thank you. Okay, Todd.
Staff has no further comments.
Okay, except for good night.
I feel like we've got sufficient direction at this time.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, thank you all again for your endurance and for being here this evening, and certainly my colleagues. That does conclude the public hearing, and we'll be back, I don't think we'll be back in May, but we'll be back here at some juncture, you know, mid-year for the consideration of the final draft, so. Flo, I'm going to turn to you, anything else? Anybody on the phone? Call us, tell us, good night.
What pressure.
Okay, all right. Ann, any comments from the county executive?
Well, I just want to reiterate my thanks to Todd and the team, John and others, that worked on this, because I know they've been working on it for a very long time, are very committed to it, and have been so open to taking feedback from the community, which was apparent today, and so, I just want to thank them all.
Great. Thanks to our partners in Ascent, appreciate the folks being here. All right, anything else for the good order, board members' comments? Is it? All right. The record reflect, we're done at 10:50, meeting adjourned, thank you all, have a safe drive home. See you early.